County Public Hospital District number one, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Regular board meeting. Uh, do we have uh any thoughts about the agenda and then I'll look for an approval?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add a more discussion of the potential levy after executive session.
So after executive session, okay?
Yep, after executive.
So back in public?
Back in public, yes.
Okay.
Well, second.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, but let's wait to get to get ready to speak first. Um, I want to add under education board reports, the Shalan meeting, just have a discussion if he was going to that and finalize that. That'd be seven A. Any other thoughts on the agenda for tonight?
All right, move to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve. Second, second by Bob, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 The two will vote aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Uh, under the consent, if you've got an opportunity to review the various new consent agenda, I will entertain a motion when ready. Approved by Erica.
Second.
Second, right, Matt, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 I too will vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, we are now on to public comments and announcements. Uh, anyone here like to make a public comment? Anybody online? I don't see any public online. I will uh make a brief public announcement on behalf of a friend of mine who I thought maybe would come here tonight. Uh, she just wanted to let let me know a couple of days ago, she stopped by Rapid Access. And it sounds like Rapid Access has seen great success. Because they were waiting for about three hours and still had not been seen. So. You know, you build it and they will come, that's a good thing. She just wanted to know, why don't we have more providers available? And I I tried to explain that that is what we spent a vast majority of our time doing is trying to recruit providers and create an environment they want to come and be a part of. So. Just making a public comment on her behalf, we hear you and uh we are certainly trying our best to continue to grow the organization. So. End of public comment. Uh, we're on to presentations and so up first will be the safe catch awards. And let me make a quick, quick reminder. So a safe catch involves at least one of the following. The catch prevented an event from reaching a patient or staff member. The catch prevented pain, delays in care, unnecessary costs, or workflow inefficiencies. The situation was high risk or had potential for greater patient harm such as communication errors, surgical site infections, or falls. The catch led to frontline or just in time improvement. So those are the rules for safe catch. Uh, Matt's on the the committee that decides all this, so to him to read off the award winners for this this quarter.
Yeah, so uh QI council, we talk about safe catch winners uh frequently at our meetings and we're always really impressed by all the nominees. And how much good work is happening on the ground here at KVH. Uh, it's really, it really is. The best part of my job is to is to sort of uh get a real sense of all the great work you guys do. So. Uh, here, and so everybody who's been nominated will be recognized. Uh, but the people we selected um are here to, uh, some of them are here tonight and we really appreciate you coming to celebrate your accomplishments. And so first we have our clinical award winners. Uh, Brooks Murrell and Amelia Vanacek uh from MedSearch and Emergency Services and the reason for nomination is advocating for additional testing for a patient. Uh, nominators are Shelby Garcia, Joel Ratcliffe, and Dahlia Person uh Imaging Tech Imaging Service. Alright, so here's one. A patient presented to the ED with eighty percent O two stats and shortness of breath. A chest X-ray was completed, but no other diagnostics in the ED. Amelia consulted with Brooks and advocated that she felt strongly this patient was experiencing a pulmonary embolism. As a result, the hospitalist intervened and ordered additional testing that came back positive for bilateral pulmon- pulmonary emboli, emboli. So. Thank you very much for for doing that. Uh, that's really a a great safe catch. Our non, yes. Our non-clinical award goes to Casey Quentrell. Quentrell.
Quentrell.
I had it right the first.
I had it right the first day.
Uh, and RN from Surgical Services. Reason for nomination observing inadequate backup outlet access in a new operating room. And the nominator was Ann Miller, RN Surgical Services. Casey was in the new operating room that had just opened after the renovation. During tour, she recognized that only a few outlets were red, generator backed up outlets. She notified the department director who investigated. It was identified that the OR had not been wired as needed for patient care, resulting in drastically fewer backup outlets. That are needed to power essential pieces of surgical equipment in the event of a power outage. Casey's shrewd observation helped to discover a construction problem that can now be corrected before it becomes a life-threatening patient safety issue. Casey is greatly deserving of the safe catch award. Congratulations, Kate. Uh, Terry Park and I, we're both on the QI council, step out for a moment and uh congratulate the winners once more.
Excellent. Thanks, man. Alright, so we're moving on to uh presentations with uh the next one is with Matt Ellsworth from the AWPHD and we're gonna talk about levies. Thank you, Matt, for uh showing up here tonight and. Glad to be here. Um, there are, there's two great things that are gonna happen today. We're gonna talk about finding new ways to bring some really great revenue to KVH. And to do, today is opening day baseball, so the Mariners have a winning record. One of those will change. So um, let's go ahead and hit present and then there's gonna be a. See, this flies around, so you gotta stay awake while I do it. I apologize to those down here, you have to look at the back of me, would hit this little button here. Okay, great. And then I'm just gonna take this and and pound on it as I go. So um, for the, for the next uh little bit of time here, I'm gonna have a conversation with all of you about going to your voters and asking for support for your hospital. We're gonna explore a little bit about uh what that looks like in the political environment around you, how voters behave. Um, do you have a shot at? Um, how do you answer the question about, well, what do we ask voters for? How much is enough? How do they say yes? How do they say no? What is it gonna be expected of you as commissioners? What's gonna be expected of you as staff? How can you legally participate as government employees, as highly elected officials who've doned your togas and walked into the forum? How dare you go out and campaign for something? I'm gonna teach you how. And so throughout this conversation is an opportunity for all of us to say, this is worth it. And this is quite frankly, the secret sauce to how these things get passed. Again, I'm with the Association Washington Public Hospital Districts. Our Board of Directors has made it a priority for us to do this work. To help hospital districts pass their bonds and levies. And we've come up with this formula and we're gonna talk a little bit about um why it works and why it doesn't. I'm gonna ignore bonds for a minute. Uh, you've heard that term before. Or bond is when you wanna build something. This is brick and mortar. We're gonna build a new hospital. Um, we may hear a conversation during the the time today about, well, Matt, um, we're, we're not asking for enough, we're asking for this much money and. Oh, people only give us money if we're building something shiny and new. We're gonna talk about that. But we're gonna talk about the levy and so uh skip through a little bit here, but. You're allowed up to seventy-five cents per thousand dollars. And that thousand dollars is if your home is worth three hundred thousand dollars, well, seventy-five cents per that thousand. That is the top of the mountain. You cannot ask for anymore. That is in Washington State statute. It does change over time and that's something we've experienced in a lot of districts. So if you set your levy at, say, fifty cents. And that nets you two million dollars. No one said there'd be math tonight. And it nets you two million dollars and next year, property values go up. Guess what? You still get two million dollars. But that levy rate is no longer fifty cents, it's now forty-eight cents. And the levy rate ratchets down, your dollar amount does not. So that gives you the opportunity to come back and say, hey, let's go back to our voters and do what's called a levy lift. Which only takes fifty percent of the voters and and make that change. Now, most importantly, and you're gonna hear me talk about this time and time again. This is the first quiz we're gonna have tonight. I always say, ask for what you need, not when you think will pass. Now, the highly elected officials and our commissioners notwithstanding, who here has run a campaign before, a political campaign? Okay, so you're gonna have to trust me on this. I ran the campaign of two current United States senators. This is where I come from and this is my background. And the first pop quiz I have for you is. Can anybody here in this room, the CEOs don't get to answer, come in the dollar amount of the last library bond that passed in this community? Ballpark? Now, don't raise your hand. How many of you voted for it? Shame on you. How dare you? How dare you vote for something you didn't know the dollar amount? You should be ashamed of yourselves. That's my point. Why did you vote for it? Because you believed it was the right thing to do? You saw a value proposition in having a library so people have access to education and books? You did it because it was the right thing to do and you felt it. You didn't do the math. And I'm here to tell you tonight, neither were your voters. And this gives you the opportunity to ask for what you need. Not going through some mental mathematical gymnastics about whether or not they're gonna yes to that number. Now, the CFO types want me to put this in here. And okay, Jennifer asked me. Um, this is what the levy rates look around the state of Washington. I've, I've picked some hospitals that are close to you in size, some that may be geographically relevant. And so Island Health, uh, this gets a asterisk. Um, hopefully after April uh twenty-first, they'll be up to seventy-five cents. Uh, Pullman, uh, there are twenty-six, Prosser twenty-nine, Samaritan forty-six, Snoqualmie twenty-eight. But this is the, the matrix of where they all lie around the state and you can see a very wide variety. I, all the PhDs are thirty-six, this includes the, your, your neighbors in number two up in Clealum, they don't have a hospital. Uh, the nursing homes, the EMS, but if we just do the hospitals, they're, they're at thirty-eight. But there's a lot higher than that. Here's the trend we are seeing. Uh, Island Health, I just mentioned, they're going to seventy-five cents. Olympic Medical Center just went to seventy-five cents. Orcas Island, seventy-five cents, Lopez seventy-five cents. They have all come to the realization that if we're gonna put layout political capital in our community to get support, then let's get all the support we can get. Now, I'm not gonna put my thumb on her, on the scale and tell you people you have to go at seventy-five. That is a decision for your, your board of commissioners. But this is what we are seeing as a trend. I don't have to tell all of you in in this room the challenges that come with running a hospital in financial terms. You do not get to ask your voters, you could, I don't recommend it. You don't get to ask your voters to do this every year. This, I'd like to say is a once in a generational type activity. So maybe every ten years, that's a short generation. We're doing dog years, yeah? But once every ten years, you get to go to your voters and ask. So make it count. Is my message to you. Um, we'll go on. So let, let's talk a little bit about the um, the funding process and what that arc looks like. So the first thing we do is we have to choose an election. You can only choose four, February, April, August, or November. And this is where you say, but Matt, you're a political professional, you've done all these campaigns, which one's better? Which one are we gonna win at? I'm here to tell you that's not how I make this judgment except one. February sucks. Um, April is good. August is good and November is good. Let me tell you what makes them bad. If you're on the ballot with something else. If you're on the ballot with a new junior high school, you're gonna lose. If you're on the ballot with an aquatics center, you're gonna win. But make the aquatic center lose. Be aware of what else is on that ballot because at the end of the day, we're making a value proposition. Take a dollar out of my wallet and give it to these people to get something. When I have two people asking for two dollars. And people start to make choices and I'm here to tell you in the current political environment, if you're asked to be taxed on more than one thing, you're gonna say no to everything. So that's my number one factor. We experienced this in Clealum five years ago. Clealum put two things on the ballot once and they both did very, very poorly. We came back and reran just one of them and boy, we crushed it. We did really well. Personally, to this group, I like August. And the reason I like August is because we never run to lose, but if you do, you can run right again in November. This is the analogy I use. We have a coffee cup and it's empty. And we are about to embark on one of the most aggressive, important, personally touching ways. That this hospital is gonna speak to their community than they've done in a, in a decade. And on Election Day, I send the same email to every CEO and I say, win or lose, rest assured, your community knows you better today than they ever have. That cup is now full. But we lost. Now, when we come back in November, guess what? We don't have to fill up an empty cup anymore. We only have to get that cup full enough to go over the top. Reruns do very, very well. Ocean Beach, they did a um, uh, I wanna say a twelve million dollar bond. They'd lost by five votes. Ran it again, we crushed it with seventy percent. So that formula works. We don't want to do that, but we're prepared to. Um, and finally, I will tell you that if you lose in this community, it will be by less than one hundred votes. We'll come back to that. Uh, sort of, it doesn't matter. Um, so you have to pass a resolution. Uh, your legal counsel will help your um, your board of commissioners write a. Resolution that says, we, the district, would like to ask the voters for sixteen cents, fifty cents, whatever you land on. Propose a ballot question. And then you have to do some, some pro and con statements. We'll come back to that another day. But. If you want to be on the August ballot, you have to pass this May second. And if August, here, here's the kicker. If you are losing in August, you have to pass your resolution one week before the final votes are in. So if you feel like it's going down, you can put it on the next ballot. So, um. And then finally, uh, solicit the voter guides, uh, that's, you, you all get that big magazine. Um, this is where I get to tell you the bad news. When you are on the ballot in August, we'll say, and you're the only thing on the ballot, you pay the total cost of the election. If you're on the ballot in, say, November, and the city council is up, the mayor is up, and there's other elections, you share the cost. It's spread out. Do not be tempted by that as a reason to go in November. Um, your cost for this election, I'm gonna guess, is gonna be somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars. And you're gonna net. Seven, five to seven million dollars off of this. It's worth it. It's, is my message. See, I told you we'd fly around. Let's talk about the political environment and how it's changed. Historically, five years ago. Um, only twenty percent of levies and bonds passed in the state of Washington. This is all for hospital districts. That's the bad news. Here's the good news. When we lost, we lost by four percent. We just barely lost. The stories I heard of us losing by ten votes, by five votes, by, was unbelievable. So we decided to go to work and move this needle. Since we've done this formula, I'm gonna talk about today. And that, this is just uh, uh, overall, fifty-nine percent are passing in the past five years. Since we've used this formula, sixty-nine percent of levies are passing. And we're winning by fourteen points. That is a seismic shift. Now, let me tell you why we shifted. And it, it goes, it's counterintuitive to many of you in this room. Matt, I'm getting taxed to death. Matt, the economy sucks. Matt, have you seen the price of eggs? Matt, I can't believe it. My property tax goes up every stinking year. But guess what? People are still choosing to tax themselves to support their public hospital districts. In face of all of that. So let's talk about the formula, about why this works. So in that arc of what we talked about earlier, we, so we kick it off, let's, we're gonna keep talking August, okay? You can choose whenever you want, obviously. But between now and August, when I say that, the staff freaks out. We're gonna launch a campaign by August? You can't do that. You've heard me say this, Rhonda. Not only can you, you have a surplus of time to do that. Cause at the end of the day, who doesn't like an long, protracted campaign? If you go in August, anything I say to the community before July fourth is forgotten. If you go in November, anything but before Labor Day is forgotten. Your CEO, I have a saying, was my saying, my, I used to be deputy chief staff to a governor. Uh, this is my wife, Amy, she's a physician assistant. No, she won't come work for you because I'm leaving with her in Seattle. Um, but, but she knows my own boss and he used to say to me, Ellsworth, if a cat dies, go to the funeral. That's your job. You're gonna go to every cat funeral there is in this community and talk about this levy and talk about this hospital and the value you're gonna give them. However. Cat only dies once. So if you go to the cat funeral next week, they're gonna forget about it in August. So what we do is we really pack everything in, into those two months before Election Day. And everything between now and then is just prep. Another quiz I give people, I say, I don't, you want all this time? Other consultants, they like to come in and say, well, take two years. Well, because they wanna bill you for two years. I'm here for free, by the way. So. And I say to them. If I gave you an extra thirty days, what would you do with it? Would you knock on doors every day? Would you make phone calls every day? No, you're not gonna do crap for those days. You're only gonna worry about this come election time. And so that's when we do this work. The math is hard. But this is, if I were to give you one thing to walk away with when you choose your amount and what wins. It is the value proposition. You've heard me say that a few times already. Now, this is where I always get told, well, Matt. The hospital speak, I love this. This is a maintenance and operation levy. Ooh, that's sexy. Who doesn't like some maintenance operations, right? Maintenance operation is boring. It's salaries. It's mowing the lawn. It's painting the parking lot, right? It's equipment. None of that gets people going. I'm here to tell you, if we had time, we could do a little exercise. I've done this before. I gave you all a piece of paper. And I say, pretend like y'all ready for class president and make me a campaign poster about why I should vote yes for this levy. And inevitably, every one of you, down to a T, will write a poster that just lists all the great things that KVH does. Why would I pay you more money for what you already do? I won't. That's what it comes down to. So now, how do we make maintenance and operation, I'm gonna turn this, see, I can see, you see my face now. How do we make maintenance and operation a value proposition? Based on what I just said. So here's what we do. If you choose. Now, this is where Jennifer's gonna get mad at me because she sent this to me in an email and it was really small print, so I forget it. But let's say seven million dollars is what you're done. Five? No, if it passes.
Oh, um.
Six million, let's say six million bucks, okay? Voters say yes, congratulations, you get six million dollars. Now, the next thing I do is I'm gonna come to your team and I'm gonna say, what are you gonna do with this six million dollars? Your team is gonna come to the staff. And say, if we were gifted six million dollars for the next ten years, which is what this levy would do, what would you want to spend it on? They're gonna ask you that question. And you're gonna say boring things, right? But there are important things. And then what we do as part of this formula is I'm gonna say, are you going to hire anybody? Yeah, of course we will. I just heard you had a shortage of, you know, those years. Instead of saying, well, we're gonna, we're gonna pay our staff, we are gonna grow and maintain local careers that keep people here at home. Now, that's a value proposition. Are you gonna expand your lab? Yes, great. We're gonna have secure and modern lab facilities right here in the neighborhood. Are you gonna bring in a specialist? Great, expanding specialty care. Where you don't have to drive over a pass. Wow, all of a sudden, I now wanna take my dollar out of the pocket. And give it to you. Cause I'm getting something new. That's pretty cool. Now, the next thing I, here's, but Matt, we live in a pseudo-conservative community. People hate taxes here. Ah, the brick nose. Know what a brick nose is? Yes.
Uh, the Kinnatahs County Health Department is overseeing mental health in our community. Is that something we should also talk about in our levy, about having more mental health here?
I, I, I think that comes later, after you make the decision about how much you're gonna ask for, then we do that exercise. To say what you're gonna spend it on. That's part of your strategic planning.
Cause the Kinnatahs County Health Department uh sent out some uh surveys uh to a lot of people. And wanted to know what they thought about mental health in our community and what we need.
That's great, or that's political intelligence. We're gonna use that after this board makes a decision.
Is brick nose, is it the word no, the plural, or are we talking nose?
A brick no.
No, so multiple no.
Is an individual that gets out of bed every morning and they grab a brick. And they walk up to the no button and they put it on the no button and they walk away. That's a brick no. I've rarely been wrong on this. Thirty-two percent of your voters are brick nose. They're gonna vote against you no matter what you say. They will swim in the sewers of social media. They will, they will have a blog that you get all worried about. Say it with me. Let it go. Ignore them. You will never win them and they are do nothing but to tear down the vision of what you have in this levy. They exist. But at the end of the day, our job is to get fifty percent. And now go back to my column about, well, oh, property taxes are high and the brick nose live in that anti-tax community quite a bit, I admit. However, statistically, of all of these that I did on that previous slide over the past five years. The more conservative the district, the better we do. Counterintuitive, isn't it? Why? Because, and let me tell you, I hate taxes. I, I gotta pay my federal taxes in two weeks. She's been hearing me yelling about this for three weeks now. I'm gonna write a check to the federal government that's not gonna do anything for me. The state of Washington is gonna tax me on my gas I buy in this fine town of yours. I may get a new road somewhere that I appreciate. But if I can pay a tax that I touches me and I could feel and does something for me, I'm gonna pay it. And that's why, and, and especially the, the, the tax sensitive communities, that's why that argument works as a value proposition. So we do some board training, we're gonna develop messaging, I'm gonna show that to you in a minute. Um, the outreach and then the unicorn challenge. Anyone know what the unicorn challenge is? Don't you really? This is great. The unicorn challenge is nobody knows what a public hospital is or that you even are one. I've done public surveys on this, professional polling. We took a hospital scenario that had the same, that we'll call it Smith. Smith Hospital in Smith Public Hospital District in Smith County. And we asked people, is Smith Hospital a public hospital? A nonprofit hospital, and intentionally using these words, a corporate for-profit hospital? Thirty-six percent said corporate for-profit. Thirty-one percent actually said it was public. So your challenge, when it comes back to messaging, is I want you to slightly change your ta, your name between now and the election. Every piece of paper, everything that goes out says, Kinnatahs Valley Hospital, a publicly owned hospital. You have to overcompensate and hyperextend those words. So that people know. That is your biggest challenge in all of this election.
Sorry to interrupt the flow here, but we have that added complexity that people already assume that a great portion of their tax dollars come here. And they go, so is that part of the development message as well?
Not really. Um, really, the message we develop is that value add. People understanding that you're public, because they don't wanna tax themselves for big corporate healthcare. People understanding that you're public because they don't want to tax themselves for big corporate healthcare. Um, you do have a bit of a, uh, you, you are in a good position. A lot of folks, their name of their Kinnatahs is also the name of your district because about well, like a Kinnatahs Public County Public Hospital District. Um, the fact your name matches does help you. Um, but that's also what the outreach and the campaign is going to do. You always lead with everybody you talk. Um, the outreach side of it, this is where I get to tell all the commissioners and everybody, um, what wins and loses. We have rules we have to follow. If you choose to put this all about, I'm going to come back and do some compliance training for everybody. Can, uh, Matt here got a new pickup. It's an awesome pickup. And Matt wants to put a bumper sticker that says, vote yes on proposition one. But I see it right there. Can you put that bumper sticker on? Yep, sure can. Oh, now he's inspired. Now Matt wants to put a ten by ten piece of plywood in the back. I see it. Can you park in the party lot? Sure can. Can he leave it there for two weeks? No. Things like that. Can staff on their landyard have a button with a QR code that says, ask us about our levy? Yes, they can. They, bingo. All they can't do is say, vote yes on our levy. That QR code sends them to your slick website that has that information. I'm going to show you some of the messages that we've used. And this is where I got to tell you the cool part about AWPD. By the way, I'm not watching the clock, so if I'm Mr. Chairman getting out of line, tell me.
I think so far you're good.
Okay. Um, AWPHD, as part of our commitment, I do what I'm doing today. If you put this on the ballot, I'm going to sit down with your staff and do that exercise. What are you going to spend the money on? And then how do we talk about it? And then comes the hard part. I take a hatchet to it all and I get to say, you only get to say four things. Come on, who doesn't love a good piece of political mail? You have the distance from the mailbox to the trash can. That's it. If you try to say more than that, you've lost. And so at AWPHD, I'm going to help you develop those message points that work and we come to an agreement about that. You are allowed as a district to send one piece of mail. That's it. To all of your residents, educating them about the merits of this levy. That's not a lot. I'll help you with that. But AWPHD, I, in my organization, I'm going to mail your community as well. And these are some examples of what we've done in the past. Um, the good news is these are often winners. Isn't that great? Um, we have a mix of some EMS and out, uh, and, um, and the rest, but, uh, Clickatack County, updated surgery options, uh, new long-term care, expanded personal care. Quincy Valley Medical Center. If passed, owned by the community, meet the demand of a growing community, delivering the wants and requests of the people. Continue responsible, careful stewardship. More providers and practices onsite, expand emergency health services. Here's another thing that I love to do. Let's say we take the levy, uh, to seventy-five cents. We do the math on the average home. And I'm here to tell you that that dollar amount is going to be shockingly small. Now, what's our main message? Keep care local. You don't have to drive to Seattle to get your care. So then nobody turn around and tell people, did you know that for less than the price of a tank of gas, you can secure modern healthcare right here at home? What a great juxtaposition. I, I don't got to drive over that mountain. I don't even got to pay for the gas. And I can stay here and do it. Finally, I will tell you, these look like slick political mailers, right? None of you can find the word yes on here. These are not advocacy pieces. These are one hundred percent educational only. And in fact, I follow the same rules that you have to follow. So when you do your piece of mail, it's going to look a lot like this. Now you can do something different, I recommend it, but E, E, Erica, I could tell you're just dying to ask me something.
So am, am I seeing two types? The, the mailers across the top, are those the ones that are promoting it? The, the ones kind of down the bottom that are more wordy? These are the ones that are informational? Am I making?
Some, some of these are both sides, so I have to have a, a address block on there. Um, I have to print the ballot language, which is probably where you're seeing the big text on some of these. Um, uh, there's ballot language right there. Uh, that's, that's a legal requirement you have to do. That's ballot language right there.
Who grabs such a, like this, this one down the right, the better cares on the ballot?
Yeah.
That's a, that really grabs my attention.
Yeah, it's great. Um, we will customize, we will use pictures of, of your local staff that have given permission. We'll have this recognizable in a local community way. This is probably one of the more fun stuff we do. Um, I usually do two of these for every district. I'll do one that, uh, shows up with your ballot, then I'll do another one right before that says, don't forget to turn in your ballot. Um, finally, and then I can take some questions or we can adjust time and I could stay later. Um, these are some resources to know. Um, your local auditor, I know you've been doing some work with already, they, they're the ones who run your election. Um, MRSC, there are some legal advisors that you can access. I know some of you have before. Um, AWPHD, we pay their fees, so, uh, you don't have to, which is pretty cool. And then obviously, um, uh, AWPHD itself, but I said other districts here. Uh, you have an opportunity to do other districts. One, be a good neighbor. Talk to them to make sure that you're not going to sink their ballot measure. They're not going to sink your, you're not on the same ballot. But you can also go to the fire district and ask their commission, would you pass a resolution supporting our levy? And they can do that. Now watch, they're going to do it to you too someday, which is okay. But I recommend you do this with your city, with your county commission, uh, with your school board. All, uh, everyone in the special purpose districts of the mosquito abatement district is particularly powerful here in Kinnatahs County. I would go and kiss the ring. Uh, so that's another opportunity there. So what comes next? Uh, uh, you as a commission will make your choices and decisions, uh, that best fits you. If you choose to put it on a ballot, um, I will come back and do some of that compliance training, what you can and can't do. The one thing I'm going to say about engaging and back to that cat funeral. Here's what wins and loses. Good messaging wins. If this doesn't pass, we're going to close services. If this doesn't pass, we're going to lay off people. I had a hospital, um, I talked to his Olympic Medical Center. That, uh, a group got together and printed a bunch of signs that said, save our hospital. I went to them and I personally threw them all away. If you say any of those things, you will lose. Because if you say the, those doomsday scenarios, and I know you're not in a doomsday scenario here, but it's tough. If you say those things, me as a voter, I assume you're mismanaged. Or I assume it's already, the ship has already sunk. So we stay positive when we have those messages out there, doing the work. Now I understand not everyone's going to knock on doors, okay? But it is baseball season and the Mariners, they're good today. But in August, they're going to ask for free time. Erica, if I were to give you a list every week for four weeks on Friday, that gave the name of everyone who's not turned in a ballot. And you sit there during the fourth inning, which is usually when it all goes south. And you look through that and you see the name of your dirtbag brother. Would you text your dirtbag brother and say, turn in your ballot dirtbag? Absolutely you would. One hundred votes will make this loose. That exercise alone in this room. And the last exercise I can give you, this will pass and fail based on your employees alone. Your employees have more skin in the game. They have the most to lose if this doesn't pass. Having them motivated, well-educated and transparent about this, do that exercise, asking them, get six million bucks, what would you spend it on? Listen to them. And then when we do that exercise about what you're spending it on, I sure want to see some of those things in there. One, because they deserve it. Two, they know better than anybody where the money is needed. But also they are going to go to their network and find their dirtbag brother, unless you two are related. That didn't put their ballot in. So with that, that's a quick overview about what can you expect, what that's going to feel like. This won't be the last time you see me unless you choose not to put it on the ballot, then I'm going to feel a little bad. I may not come back for a month or two and you got to wait to see me eventually. So. Uh, Mr. Chairman, how would you like to manage, uh, thoughts and questions, uh, from here?
Just open up to the room. Does anybody currently have any questions they'd like to ask Matt?
One, one question.
Sure.
So with the hospital district two levy that we passed, there was a lot of misconception about how much work that we as employees or contractors of the district could do. So we even, as far as for a minute, we couldn't even use our work email to talk about the levy. So we shared each other's personal emails. We tried to talk during business hours and, and then it was a reminder of, we can do all the education we want, all the talking.
Right.
Libby, all of what that's for. We just can't say vote yes.
That's correct. Two golden rules. One, thou shalt not use district resources. If you're, I don't, I, I don't know how well you know, uh, at least up at, uh, Island Health, um, they're, they're doing their levy right now. And I called her the other day and she says, well, you got to give me ten minutes. I'll call you back. She calls me back. She was out doing an educational session with a men's running group at six AM. We've done homeowners associations, all of that. But if you want to tell them to vote yes, you can't use a copy machine around the corner here. You cannot use your district email. You can educate. You'll notice on all of these, we hedge, I say, if passed, proposition one would. And you can say positive, great things it will do. You just can't say the word yes. You can run right up to that line and I'm going to. Now, can you, as commissioners, can you write a letter to the editor that says, Matt Altman, Kinnatahs Valley Healthcare Commissioner? Can you sign it with your title? Yes, you can. Didn't you know you own your title? It's like an ambassador. They have a title for life. You've earned it. You've been, you, you see a, a statewide campaign and here comes Jay Inslee on an ad telling you to vote for something and it says Jay Inslee Governor? He owns that title and so do you. If there's an outside group that chooses to raise money and put up and buy signs that say vote yes, can you sit on that committee? Yes, you sure can. And that can meet in this room and drink your delicious coffee? No. They can't. I, 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 she actually just said to me, she's like, oh, I miss hospital. She stopped working in a hospital a while ago, so. Anyway, um, so, so yeah, there, there will be some plans to be had that, that we will come back and, and actually I have a great do's and don't sheet we'll give to all the staff. Um, and the good news is when I give you that sheet, the things you can do is that list is a lot longer than the things you can't.
Uh, other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so Matt, you had said, uh, ten-year levy. I mean, how do you decide between, you know, a timeframe of ten years versus a permanent levy versus other options?
Sure. Hey, and for those of you who, who aren't aware, uh, you can, when you do a levy, you kind of get a menu of different levies you can choose from. Uh, your first criteria is pick a levy where you only have to get fifty percent. Because that's a heck of a lot easier. Um, secondly is, uh, most districts are doing a levy lift under a permanent renewing. Um, and I find that because of that, that ten-year rationing down of the levy with property values going up, ten years tends to be that natural time that hospital districts come back and say, let's reevaluate where we are on our levy. That's, that's why I picked the ten-year.
Still a permanent, but still a permanent.
It is, it is a permanent lift. Um, but if you lift it to seventy-five, it ratchets down. And in ten years, when that's sitting back at fifty, you're going to want to have a conversation to say, hey, do we use that opportunity and go back to seventy-five? So the, the ten, yes, there is such thing as a ten-year, um, capped timeframe levy, but a permanent renewing, you're not capped at ten, that natural progression of that.
Jason, did you ever follow?
Uh, yeah, as I asked, so we can only do one mailing. What part do you see at other facilities with the unions buying in and doing any advocacy?
Really great question. Um, we've seen, um, you, we've seen tremendous union support. One, because we're going to do that exercise with the staff that says, we're going to get more money. How can we make your work life better? And you're going to respond to that. By the way, I would hedge to say that list they come up with, most of them you're going to do anyway. But it's important to hear it from them too. That's an exercise that, um, our union partners have, um, appreciated. Uh, we had two levies that, believe it or not, the local, uh, Realtors Group did radio ads saying, support it. The Realtors Group, property tax. Guess what? People buy houses, there's good reliable, modern healthcare around the corner. And so you'll be surprised at the partner that we find out there. Um, they, they're everywhere, but we, we have found great partners in that. Now, what loses is if you throw this on the ballot and hope for the best. I've seen it time and time again. That will lose. It's the, that engagement piece. It's, i- i- it's your CEO going to, to going to the running club and giving those presentations and staying with that message that that resonates. And I, I found, I mean, you are a special unicorn and I love you, but the reality is when I see that list, the things that are going to resonate here when we develop these message points, we've pretty well baked around the state, different communities, and, and we, we kind of know where, where that lies.
Commissioners, have any additional questions?
The, the last thing I'd say to you is, um, this is an incredibly empowering thing to do. It forces you to interact in your community in a way you never have, or maybe you haven't in a very long time. And it's kind of cool. People start asking you about your hospital more because they're seeing these things in the mail. They're, they're seeing a presentation at, at, at the, uh, you know, at, at, at the kids volleyball team. They're, they're curious and you get to proselytize the cool things you do. And be really proud of, of, of all the things you become and what you're about to become with the new money. And you'll find it really impactful and dare I say fun for some folks uh, to come and be a part of this. Because again, you don't get to do it all the time. And, uh, I've found that, and one time I was asked this, and somebody said, have you found that after you do this, that we actually have a bump in, um, people who come and use our services? I thought it was kind of interesting. So I started looking a little bit and it has created a little bit of a bump. Because people may not have known that you had a certain service line, but now they're talking to you about it. Your website traffic is going to go way up because we're going to have one of these little things on there. Uh, with that, thank you for having me. Um, I'm, I'm an open door and, uh, all of, uh, uh, you have my phone number. As you make these considerations, um, thoughts, uh, the last thing we do during the campaign is, uh, we're, we're a bit of a counselor. Um, we had the, the lead staff and one of them, she would call me every Thursday morning while she dropped off her kids at daycare. Um, we can do that too. So.
So you're a counselor or?
It's, it's a little bit of both. Um, but, uh, I, 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 this is one of the more empowering, empowering things I get to do. And if any of you are thinking about sitting on the sideline, once you launch this, I would say, let's go back Jennifer to that six million dollar number. I'm a donor. I just walked into your meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to give you six million dollars. Donation. In fact, I'm going to do it for ten years. What would you do for my money? You'd mow my lawn. You'd name the damn building after me. You guys would bend over backwards to get that check from a donor. But the reality is you only have one sixty million dollar donor. And it's your voters. So bend over backwards to get it from them.
Thank you.
All I got, thank you so much.
Any of the, uh, casual, Jason, do you feel we'll need Matt anymore tonight for any reason?
I'm okay dismissing Matt and then I know he's available with calls and stuff as well. So I'm okay with it, but really leave it to the commissioners.
Thanks for the coffee. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, moving on, presentations, we're going to move into, uh, what we call department spotlight. So last month, we entertained the idea of, um, maybe make some slight adjustments to how this meeting unfolds. One of the ideas that emerged from that was to each, uh, meeting spotlight part of the organization, get to know them a little bit better, have them a chance to, uh, to show what they do and what they're excited about sharing with us. So, uh, our first one tonight, I'm going to hand it off to Ron, uh, Ron to introduce what we're doing for our spotlight tonight.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I'm very excited to have Kimmy Greenwood as our Director of Agnostic Imagery here with us. here with us. And then also Matt Izzy, who is a MRI technician and our, um, MRI safety officer. And we are so thrilled and delighted with the new equipment that we have. We thank the board for supporting it. We also have staff up here, additional techs. Um, I'm sorry you have a tough act to follow, but I know.
Hi, Matt. I'm the lead MRI tech and, uh, we're going to talk about MRI today. And what we've been doing. But first I'd like you to meet the MRI team. That's me up there, Matt. And then we have Elizabeth, who's been doing MRI for 30 years and awesome tech. Uh, the ER loves her too, especially right when she's about ready to clock out. MRI in and she stays late and does it. We have Zed, all-around nice guy. He's our newest addition. And, uh, patients just feel super comfortable around him. And so any time we get claustrophobic patients, he's our guy and gets them through it. So we have Paul Ford and Corey Leesman. They are also MRI techs that are per diem, so they fill in when, uh, somebody needs some time off or is sick or something like that. And they do an awesome job of that.
I wanted to say Seth left a higher paying physician that was just a few minutes drive from his house. Take a little bit less money, well, maybe it's more than a bit, to drive basically almost three hours a day to come and be a member of this team and work for KBH.
Oh, and I love it here.
So what's happening in MRI, we're going to be talking about the new scanner, some monitoring equipment and some of the other things that we've, some of the other new equipment we have. Uh, we're going to talk about keeping patients local and with these complex electrical exams, uh, or implants. And we're going to be talking about some of the new studies that we're doing. And, um, talking about kind of our culture, enhanced access of getting people in and, um, our, uh, problem solving. So this was our old MRI mobile that patients would have to go into. They have to either go up the ramp or go up a lift that sometimes didn't even work. Um, that was the tube. And, um, this is a different picture, but it was basically like that. Super com- super confined and super scary to go into. And now we have this well-lit room. We got beautiful pictures on the wall, clouds on the sky. And, uh, it's just a really amazing place. And we get lots of compliments from the patients. Yeah. Okay. So ours is the GE Signa Voyager. It's one of the best scanners in the state. Uh, we're getting exceptional clinical images. And even the neurologists are even commenting on it. We had one of our, uh, x-ray techs. They had their wife come in to get scanned and they went to their neurologist in Swedish. And the neurologist said, wow, these are a lot better. These images are a lot better than ours. So that's pretty cool. We can accommodate all different sizes of patients. And, uh, we're streamlining performance. We're getting shorter scan times, getting more people in. And, uh, this scanner can also just kind of sharpen images too. So people that are moving and they're getting blurry images, we can do some things to, to make sure they're diagnostic. And I'll just give you an example. At my wife's clinic, the provider, he wanted to go over to Bellevue to get one done. Well, he's not claustrophobic. He says he's not moving, but the images just keep, are blurry. So, and the actual MRI techs are actually yelling at him, saying, you need to hold still. He's like, I am holding still. And then he did it again, but went to his across, same thing. Finally he came here and he was holding still, but for whatever reason they were blurry. We were able to change the parameters, change some of this motion sensitivity, got beautiful images. And now they know exactly what's going on with his neck. So it's pretty neat. Keeping patients here, um, with, uh, these electrical implants. So we used to send all these studies out. We used to send out heart monitors, shunts, stimulators, pain pumps. And now we're doing almost everything that comes through. And a lot of that is the scanner and some of it is, uh, the MRI techs. So there's a lot of research that goes involved. Uh, this new scanner has a, it's a low SAR mode. What that is, is that's the RF, the radio frequency coming down and it kind of heats up your body, but it also heats up wires and burns out electrical implants. So we can put that in low SAR mode. And then the rest of it is us doing our research. And we have actual people coming in from Petron and it can have it. They come in and they, um, they'll either turn it on MRI mode or they will, they'll kind of show us on a lot of training that goes involved. So, and each protocol has its own, each protocol, each implant has its own protocols that we have to do. Uh, different brands have different things and.
Models years.
Yeah, make models years.
This information is gathered by our PSRs, our schedulers to start with. Then the MRI techs take it from there and they are, you know, Googling, they're getting ahold of the reps.
It's a lot of research, a lot of research. And you might have one device that is MRI safe, but then the wires were not safe. And so you really have to. And so this is really helping out our community. People don't have to drive over to Seattle to get this stuff done. We're doing it right here. And, uh, these are some of the new studies we're doing. We're doing the CFF flow studies. We're, we're doing a couple of those. Um, ones that we're doing a lot of is total hip and toe knee replacements. So it used to be, there were so much metal artifact, you couldn't see any tissue, any, anything around that joint. Well, now with our new scanner, we're able to see all the muscle, if there's edema, if there's masses, uh, ligaments, tendons. So, um, yeah, providers are able to figure out and help their patients a lot sooner now. We're doing iron overload studies and that's new. And then our newest one is our enterography. So that one was, I was going to highlight that one. Dr. Fang's been wanting this for the last five years. So he was super excited for us to get it. And, um, it was a pretty complicated exam. We have to give them CT contrast. Uh, we have to give them other pills that we didn't know. So there was a lot of research that went into this. I'll just read what he said here. So we've had at least four patients so far that we would have had to send outside to Kiditas Valley Healthcare to get an MRE, which is an enterography. And it's been more than four. The readings and the results look great and they have modified treatment. The emphasis for MRE is it allows us both to diagnose chronic disease and monitor treatment responses without giving extra radiation. Most of the patients with inflammatory bowel disease are younger patients where radiation on multiple episodes would be detrimental. It's important that we have a radiation-free way of having the equivalent way to diagnose and monitor the small bowel with cross-sexual anatomy or cross-sexual gene. Patients have reported being very satisfied with their MRE experience. So, and it's a real, early, hard exam to do.
That's great. And Dr. Fain came to our open house whenever we first had the MRI and it was wonderful that he came. I was so excited because I was able to introduce him to Matt. And that's when I got on this conversation of doing the MRI.
So enhanced access, we're getting quick patient friendly exams, which is good, which we should be doing. Uh, getting consistent image quality. And we're meeting the needs of our community. So people aren't going uh, to Yakima or having to go over the past, especially in snowstorms and stuff. Um, and patients are actually traveling here. So we got people from Wenatchee, Yakima, CL coming here to get their MRI. And we're just getting a strong reputation in our community. I know the whole hospital is, but also in MRI. And I'll just give you an example of that too. And I was walking down hall, one of the nurses, she was like, oh, my significant other's back is so bad. Is there any way we can get him in? And so I was like, let me look at the schedule because we've been fitting people in. And, uh, we got him in. I looked for a week part in the schedule. We got him in. And, uh, we sent the images over and he had emergency back surgery a couple of days later. He was nine days out on his MRI, but he had the surgery like five days after that MRI. So, and, uh, she was just thrilled and telling everybody and that word mouth was just spreading. And we have lots of stories like that too. And then our service culture and problem solving, we have really high knowledgeable techs. Liz and Zed, they really know a lot. Uh, flexible schedule, meeting emergent needs. And one thing that we're not doing that sometimes we would have to do would be reschedule patients. So patients are staying here. They're not getting rescheduled. And patients are just enjoying their MRI. Like they got off the table. Those people don't like their MRI. And we're just focused on serving the community. And, uh, one of our problem solving, uh, what I wanted to talk about. So Liz, she was working, she was working, uh, Liz. She was working at night about ready to clock out and then like clockwork, the ER called. Could get in, get her patient in while this pregnant lady had appendicitis. And we don't have a protocol for that. Liz is all by herself. She doesn't have a radiologist to tell her what type of sequences or make a protocol. But she figured it out with all of her experience. And that patient actually went to surgery that night for, um, for, she had appendicitis so bad. So she didn't have to get sent out, which was really, really a big deal. So what's next in MRI? MRI compatible pacemakers, we're working on that. We have policies in place that we're moving forward on. Uh, conscious sedation is something we've kind of planted seeds for. It's not a big need for that. Cause we have Zed and all these claustrophobic patients, definitely move to get them through it. So, but that is something we're, are looking to get in place. And, uh, quantification studies for Dr. Gusterson. That is something that's going to help him, help his patients with dementia and be able to diagnose and treat dementia. So. And then our cardiac is growing. So I'm hoping at some point we can get the radiologist to read hearts and we can get extra training. We'd like to start doing hearts here at some point, a little way down the road. And just wanted to say thank you for the awesome MRI suite, MRI team and Kimmy. And it's been really awesome. So.
It's such, um, an amazing view I have from my office seeing this team work. I mean, the imaging team is wonderful, but where they've taken, you provided resources, grabbed a hold of it and they totally changed MRI. This counting and beyond really, as people are learning more about it, they're wanting to come to work and to have their study. So I'm, I'm just, I mean, I want to cry because I'm, I'm wearing that in my career. It's just an amazing thing to see. I'm so proud of them. Really cool.
Any questions for Matt?
No, it's just really exciting to see the technology come along. The staff just ran with expanding the services. It wasn't, uh, hey, now we got to go figure out how to need to expand. You gotta do this. You guys just listen to the docs and you figure it out. And we were able to hire additional staff, additional skill sets and invest in our staff to, to be able to do that. So it's been really fun.
We were actually in our high risk OB meeting today, talking about whether MRI could be used in ovarian torsion and topic pregnancy. And I, I looked at some studies and there's actually research showing that that can be done.
That is possible. Yeah. Where I've done. Yeah.
Yeah, we'd love to partner with you, anything like that. Um, we, we, uh, I ran into Dr. Gusterson one night, heading out from work and talked to him for about 45 minutes, just how excited he is with what we were able to do now. Um, you know, with the resources that have been provided and things are coming, you know, like answers to prayers. And, um, so this is the team to take something like that on.
Getting to play with new toys is always. Thank you.
Make a comment. I have some patients shared with Ortho Northwest in Yakima and they were sending their patients back here to get their MRI. Can you please arrange this because your scanner is better than ours?
Yeah.
It's really exciting.
Comment about the service culture and problem solving. Uh, I had seen a specialist on West Side who ordered an MRI. Apparently they would only submit documentation to my insurance company and they use their MRI. But this beautiful new one here and it's here. Um, and so I spoke with the staff in imaging. It wasn't their problem to solve, but that didn't matter. They, they worked on it. They, they got me the preauthorization. It was phenomenal and it was very fast. And then I enjoyed my MRI experience. Everything was so positive about the whole experience. So, um, thank you for that.
Definitely a team. Our front, our front end is just as much a part of the team as these folks are.
Start to finish, just bling away.
Is, is there a typical schedule for the MRI uses? Do we have hours during the day that's typical?
Yeah, Monday through Friday at seven to seven 30. And then Saturday, it's usually dependent on, there's only one tech. So there'll be a 10-hour shift or a 12-hour shift. So it's usually about eight to five on Saturday.
And if we had something come through the emergency room in the middle of the night, do we have on-call people yet or so?
They'll stay here and we'll do it Monday morning.
So with, uh, you said that, uh, you're able to do this, uh, do the MRIs more quickly than previously.
Yes.
Uh, so it sounds like there's huge demand for this, right? So it, I mean, has there been a really big uptick in demand from compared to when we had the previous, uh, previous equipment to now?
We had the demand before. We just didn't have the capacity. So I think when we had the trailer, we were capped at probably seven or eight a day.
Yeah, we're maybe a little bit more. We were also, we were struggling just to keep, we're four or five weeks out. And now we're about one weekend. So we're getting, we're able to get more, we're able to get people in and then a lot of stats come in and are emerging.
That's difficult week. How many people get MRI? How many MRI?
Probably 12, 12 to 14 a day, depending on.
A day, not long ago, we did 17. Five of those came, well, it's a combination between inpatient and ED patients. And prior to this team and this new MR, um, the ED didn't even try really to get it. They would, once in a while ask, can you do this MR? But they just knew there was no place to put it. But Matt's kind of worked, we, he puts, we've got patients scheduled all day long, but he's got areas in the schedule where they know they can fit something in. So it's, the more they're saying yes, the more are coming and the more we're asked. So it's, it's pretty.
Is there any, any unexpected downtime of this new equipment?
No.
So that's an improvement too. I think the other one was, is that issue? Good. I'd like to ask, um, Seth, you made a choice to come here and do this. Are you, if you feel comfortable, do you wonder how you analyze this and what your thought process was to commit to a, a longer drive to be a part of this or?
So I do, uh, she's singular. I works in their personal office. And I knew Dr. Vongo and I knew them long enough. And he, I worked with him for four years at North Phoenix Northwest. And I trusted him. And he said that he came here and everything been positive when he came here. And then I found out about Kimmy through him. I had worked with Matt previously. And I enjoy all my time with Elizabeth. I've never met it. It was awesome. So, but I came for my interview and I got to meet the team and then I got to see your new suite and the new equipment. And that, uh, excited me also. And so everything from that was just positive and that's why I made the decision.
I appreciate it. Yeah, well.
HR called me and I said, yes.
Also drives, she lives, um, east of Quincy. So she drives a long way every day to, to come here. So.
Has a lot of dedication. We really appreciate it.
This is a good place to live. It's a little bit lethal, basically.
Anything else for us on this?
No, that's all I have. Yeah. But yeah, we're loving the MRI suite and yeah, it's been really good. So thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing. It's been wonderful to, to learn from what you're doing and stuff. Thank you, Kimmy. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, for putting this together. Yeah, for putting this together.
So um so as you wrap it up, you you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, if we have some patients, we have to go MRI.
Alright, so that wraps up the presentations, we're moving on to reports and dashboards, first up. Danny Olson, Chief of the Office of Quality, man, what do you got there?
Well, my report starts on page, what page is that, fourteen, thirteen? And um I have a few things I want to add. First, I just want to uh say. Um Anna has done a wonderful job being prepared. We often say she's chicken little in our department because she is like, this guy is falling. Um but it really helps us be prepared for any outbreaks and so she's done some great work with um measles, making sure that. Our staff informed and working with with the clinic teams in uh preparing if if we did have any measles cases. There have been two in Washington State recently, um so making sure that we're we're on top of that. So I'm just really uh appreciate her proactive approach.
Do we have any sense in this community, what percentage of people have had vaccinations for the measles?
I don't know that answer off the top of my head, I know that um we have a better handle of where we are with our employees. With our um immunore software that we implemented a couple of years ago. And that's really helped us so that if something happens, we we are ready to take care of our employees and give them peripheral access, I think. But um I don't know that number for the community. The health department might know, uh and we still do meet with them once a week. To connect on cases or what we need to be doing per pair, so that relationship has. Been maintained, you know, even past COVID, so we're really glad to have that. Didn't know if anybody else had any questions about measles that I may or may not be able to answer, but I know it's it's out there.
With outbreaks in the country, those are primarily places where they don't have a high level of vaccination.
That's my understanding and some is where they can't vacs, they can't vaccinate yet um because of age potentially. And I think travel's been involved in in some cases, I know one of the cases in Washington State, there was out of. Through the country travel, international travel and then they spread it to a person once they returned and were symptomatic.
Do you remember about the ten or fifteen years ago, there were the really bad. The infection over in the county where Moses Lake is uh due to the measles. Because uh somebody who went here from Japan and they had that and they infected a lot of people. And that county had to spend many million dollars protecting the county uh from other people getting infected.
So one of the recommendations that's coming up from public health is for providers to make sure they're checking vaccine status at every visit. And especially if people are traveling to look at that, so with their patients.
There's a woman who delivered in Lubbock last week and she had measles, which exposed all the newborns and that. And it was a county hospital, so.
So we have our eye, we're closely watching that. Um the other thing I want to talk about is, I'm I'm sad because it didn't quite show up as beautiful as it is on the board bracket. But we have a new dashboard and Jason had some wonderful suggestions for for changing it. Uh to add the look back, the previous year look back, so you can see. It's just the gray is a little bit hard to see, we might have to uh make it a little darker on our version, so you can see it a little bit better. But um there's a gray side and it has the previous year's monthly average. So you can look year over year and where that's, um I think some of the places it's most, like just looking at. Um the fall risk screening, you can see when we started with that, um you know, we're forty percent, thirty percent, fifty percent. Of doing those fall risk screenings in the clinics. To where we are now, so even though we're not where we want to be, we're not at target, like just how far we've come with improvement over the years. Um the same is true with uh some of the other measures. We don't have it on here anymore, but the suicide risk assessment, because we have, we've kind of topped out on it, right? We've gotten to our improvement goals, so still monitoring it, but it's not on the dashboard anymore. I mean, that was started out at like forty percent, so it was, it's really great to see that year over year um average. So I want to make sure to highlight that. The Medicare wellness visit measure did change from last year, so the previous year it was a rolling twelve month average. And that was because that's the way it's measured at the World Collaborative. It's not super helpful when staff are trying to make changes month to month and do improvement. So it's now the monthly rate. Um and we're real excited to see how the clinics um do with that, I think we'll be seeing some changes. Angela was sharing at our data share meeting how, you know, the goal is really to increase the value to the patient. Um and and the value the patient sees in that visit. Um they're starting with in in, I'm in Stacy too and Dr. Thomas, if I've got this wrong. But um in internal and adult medicine with the QI project. So seeing if we can increase the access and the value to the patient with the dedicated um RN for that. So excited to see if that, if we can see some more movement, um especially with the rate being month to month. Um there is a new measure um in the middle of the hospital quality page, it's called timely surgical first wheels in. Um and that's really about, now that, I I don't want to steal any thunder, we'll talk about it later. But now that the expansion um is done, uh surgery will be moving into their surgical access. Coffee, so really looking at how we can improve access and having timely starts helps to make sure that. You're having the most efficient use of that OR time, um so this was the measure they selected as part of that coffee, so. Get on here, so this is your baseline. For that measure. And I think that was it as far as the dashboard, unless you had questions about the dashboard. Or any of the. Comments on it.
Really like the look back feature.
I love it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Amy, for making those changes.
Thank you for not making it in a table. I know some of our financial folks like tables and I like.
On page sixteen, just the diabetic foot checks, just give a little lower, is there other thoughts on that?
Um the FME had an all staff meeting about this and they reviewed it and talked about the whys, what what's going on, yeah. Why are we seeing such a difference here? One of the reasons that they think it's declined, it has to do with the charting. And instead of charting that the patient declined, which would be a failure, um having it. Postpone and so it will be queued to ask them again in the future, so they get that screening. Um but I I can't remember what else we were trying, I don't know, Dr. Thomas or Stacy, if you.
That's pretty much it, we've talked about it at uh internal and adult medicine also. And that was the other question that came up is postpone versus patient decline.
It's not a perfect measure either, there are times when if the fall risk screening or the diabetic foot check is done. Prior to it being due, it doesn't capture it in the, um so we're probably better than this looks. Uh it's just the way the data is captured, um it has to see that it's due and then that you had, you said it was done. For it to be in the measure.
We did, we did run a one year trial period as well with our physician compensation global package. With a quality metric tied to it, so we did have a one year incentive on that, so that did drive some. A lot more attention to it at that time. And that we're we're hopeful that attention would stay and a lot of this work, I believe is teed up from the HMA's as well, so. That was the all staff meeting that Stacy was talking about going back to the staff to remind of it and keep that tension high.
I think we've had a lot of new staff to providers and staff and so as that turnover happens, you know, are they. Understanding the importance, are they, is, are they getting oriented to it, is it something we're focusing on, so. I think, I think there's a lot of opportunities. Besides incentives.
Anything else from your core report? Have any questions for at this point?
Nope, looks good, I like the new. Service lines and graphs.
Excellent, so then I think we've got a quality measure to be discussed, was uh tonight is hospital mortality, is there sheer notes?
Um and so on the, you can see our measure, which is on that hospital quality page in the uh bottom middle. Um this measure is, so there's a few different ways mortality might be measured. This is our measure, KVH defined measure and um part of the reason for doing that is making sure we're capturing. All of our patients, right, we don't have a separate obs unit or inpatient unit or understanding if we have a problem with all of our patients. So this does, um it only is RPG physicians, our hospitalists, it does not include um family birthplace. It does include um inpatient observation and swing bed, which is not typical um to have swing bed. But it's important to us, uh we wouldn't want to have our swing bed patients being discharged and coming right back. And it's all care types, so um that's different from what you would see on care compare. Care compare is only in patients, only Medicare, traditional Medicare patients. Um and that's so they can through claims data see that the uh it was, whether it was a readmission within thirty days. They look, uh or mortality. For any reason, they do not exclude um hospice or comfort care measures, which we do exclude on our measure. It it's a little bit, there's some nuance there, if a patient comes in and we are doing everything we can do. Um and later they're transitioned to comfort care, we still count that in our mortality rate. But if right away as they come in, they have a terminal illness or something, we know that um or it's not looking like. It's possible to save this person and the family's decided comfort care really early on, then they are excluded.
Sorry, you're getting it a lot of really important uh. Important issues that are, I think, clarifying for me what this means. Is there, is there a way to to explain what this, because it's, in in one sense, it's obvious what this means, hospital mortality. But like, sounds like um some patients are included, some are excluded. If they've left, that sort of counts, some cases if they're here, it doesn't count in some cases. Do I, uh could you just explain to me what this means, uh like what the term means?
Mortality is a patient die.
Right, yeah, I know that.
In our hospital.
It just seems to be in our hospital.
Yeah, the care compare shows within thirty days of your inpatient admission. So we're talking about patients um where their discharge disposition was expired. Left, they did not leave here alive.
Okay, so that's, and it's just, that counts everybody, so even if, it's just everybody who expires on the premises.
Unless they are a surgical patient. Uh and the hospitalist might be just consulting, okay, so we're looking at hospital, hospitalist care. If they are in the family birthplace, that's not included in this, so this is med surg, CCU patients, hospitalist patients.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Not if they're on hospice or like, so we're expecting that the person is going to pass while they're here.
Okay, and this is regardless of. Regardless of fault.
Right.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be a different thing, right? If we think that there was an error that, or something went wrong, that the patient died. Then that would be a completely, it'd be on here.
Yeah.
But that would be when there, the list of serious reportable events that we would have to um report to the state and uh. You know, there, that's the disclosure of, um I think during QI council, there was some discussion about disclosure of unplanned medical events. So by law and regulation, we have to disclose to families if things go wrong too.
Our goal line for that would be much lower, right?
What?
Our goal line for that scenario would be much lower.
Yes, you would know about it too, if that had happened, if we were.
So like.
Be communicating with the board.
So hypothetically, there's, there's a bad accident and I mean, someone comes in.
Yeah.
And they expire shortly.
That probably would not be on here, in the ER, the ER is not part of this.
Okay, so it uh, okay, alright.
Their med surg CCU.
Alright.
So.
I'm getting a picture.
Yeah.
You, you have to, the nuances are a little tricky.
And it's, it's weird because this is our measure, now we also work with WISHA. And they help us get the same specifications and um get a benchmark from the whole state. So it's, so the rate that's on here is from WISHA helping us calculate it. We do need to get the new one from um. From for twenty twenty-four to start putting on for this year, but they help us calculate that so that we have something to look at.
So let me ask sort of a pointed question, so if it, it has nothing to do with fault, so it just, it it may just be a function of who comes in. And and who I'm treating, I mean it's.
Maybe why our rate is not as high too.
Right, it may just. I guess the question is like, what is this telling us? Well, like what is this telling us, right, because it just, it doesn't seem enough to do, it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with how good a care they're getting. It's, it's only certain, in certain departments.
If you look at this and you see that four point nine and you're like, what's that, what happened there, why is there a spike?
Right.
And we go and look at it, when I first started in this job, I think we had, you know, the tables and the red, yellow, green. Mortality was always on there and it was like one percent or zero percent, really low. And I was like, this is stupid, it's not telling us anything, we're not doing anything with it, why are we measuring, so I stopped measuring, I stopped, I mean, we were measuring it, but I stopped. Putting it on the wall and um the surveyors came through and said, you have to measure this, you have to measure this. So we took piece of paper and we. Put a line on here and I put a dot with, there's the rate, because it's so low, it's easy to calculate, it's easy to extract. And that's what we did, we had it on the wall, so it wasn't until, I think a few years ago, I put it on the dashboard in relation to. DNV, so see uh conditions of participation and the WAC related to what you should measure and monitor and report up to your governing body. And it's one of the ones, so I don't know if it's making a huge difference for us in how we're caring for our patients every day. It's something that we are supposed to keep an eye on and have in front of the board. And that's, I I think we do great, I think we would see a problem well before we were looking on this graph. And saying, ooh, there's a spike, but when we do see something, we we look at it also.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm not. Everybody, you know, everybody has their time and some people are gonna do, they're gonna meet their, uh you know, they're gonna meet their end in the hospital. Through no fault of, I, so I just, I guess I'm not, it's, it's sort of seems almost random or.
No, I mean, you might see a problem, like what if all of a sudden, yeah, this rate is creeping up and you're going, you gotta go, what's going on? This is different from how we've been, is there a problem, is there? You know, is there something happening that's different and and we need to look into it more?
I don't know, I sort of, I compare it like if you, if if we were getting, if we were measuring the rate of heart attacks or something. I mean, it would be interesting, but it wouldn't tell us anything about what we're doing right or wrong, so it sort of strikes me as. Anyway, I mean.
Can, because it it's not necessarily how they come in, it could be our treatment while they're here.
Yeah, but then that would be a separate, separate thing, if it, I mean, if it were as a result of of our treatment, that would be.
They'd still show up on here.
Yeah, they'd show up on here, but this particular measure doesn't tell us whether it's a result of something we did or just the fact that we're getting a certain population of. Of patients.
A recent example where I think this might be relevant is as Idaho was approaching uh over capacity during COVID. And they were reaching the decision about uh employment crisis standards of care. Um many of the hospitals uh were reluctant to acknowledge they were reaching their capacity, became very politicized. And this data would telegraph that the capacity was being stretched and the crisis standards of care were de facto being employed. Even though it had not been declared as an official status, so I'm not suggesting, hopefully not going to, that um we're going to face that particular challenge. But it will telegraph um other stresses that are affecting our ability to deliver. But it will telegraph um, other stresses that are affecting our ability to deliver the same standards of care on a, on an ongoing basis.
Alright, okay.
I'm curious too. I mean, I'm not the only, we have a lot of experience in the room with mortality rates too. Like, I don't know, Monda or Debbie, what your experience with them is or if you, mortality rate or if you find it.
I'm used to looking at, I would have to look at your inclusion exclusion. I think what we're including may be too broad, honestly, um, compared to what you normally would report if we weren't critical access.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think you're, you're spot on with your questions. I was just telling Jennifer, um, I would anticipate somebody who understands data to, to question the measure in the way that we're using it here. Um, I agree with Mandy that we know it, we already are looking at our processes when we have. Like typically you're looking at patients who are dying in our hospital within twenty-four hours of admission. You're looking at, you're, you're looking at like case mix index, how sick were they? And you're spot on with all the things that you're describing. And then you're, you're matching that to your mortality rate. So it's usually normalized and you're benchmarking to your point. We're not doing that here because we don't report it out in the same way that you would in other hospital systems, if that makes sense. So we're looking at it because we're doing our due diligence to look at it and we should be watching it for trends, et cetera. But it's not really a statistical data point for us because of the way we're in care. And cause we're not excluding the people that, like typically if you.
Perfect segue into the, how CMS measures it, which is what we used to have on the dashboard. But it's so old, it's not very meaningful and they do all that risk adjustment. It's by um, condition, um, but you can have such small numbers there that you have to have, you have twenty-five of them. Anyway, it, it's that, that's why we put it on that way, because that is more real to us instead of waiting for CMS's calculated information, which is the, so the, the data we have from CMS right now, it's on care compare, is from third quarter twenty twenty through second quarter twenty twenty-three. And it's by condition, the only conditions that we had enough patients for it to populate and to have that data is for C O P D, heart failure and pneumonia. And in those cases, our rates weren't statistically significantly different from the national rate. So it's like, do you show that or do we have a measure? And, and wish it does, it's not risk adjusted, but that's where we have, we have a comparison. It's more real time.
I can give you an example. So we are counting patients so that they come into the hospital and if we recognize that they need to be going home on hospice, that wouldn't be counted in the CMS measure, but we're counting them.
No, we're not. If they, if right away when they're here, they are hospice.
No, no, when we decide during the admission, if we get them to a hospice care while they're, we realize that that's the path they're going, that wouldn't be counted in the CMS measure, but we're counting it.
Not.
I thought you said only if they come in and they're on hospice.
No, if they're hospice and then shortly after they're here, if that's determined.
Oh, okay, that's understood.
Yeah.
But anyways, there's, there's reasons, there's a lot of reasons when you're looking at data for morbidity and mortality and healthcare. Um, but I would agree that this measure is not.
Not my favorite one to uh, make changes based on.
Alright, well, no, I appreciate you, um, appreciate you helping me uh, get a grip on it. Thanks.
Well, did you get a grip on it? I was so confused.
It is confused.
It's a per measure, yeah.
It's a loose grip.
Any more questions on this or Amanda, anything else you want to add?
Um, I just wanted to say, so because we have small numbers, we do, we look at every single case they're looked at. And um, some of the things we can see from it is that, like the top five diagnoses of patients of mortality here. And sepsis is thirty-five percent of those cases, um, respiratory failure, COVID, pneumonia. Um, in our adaptics data, you can see that includes everybody, um, including hospice or palliative care. And that's about fifteen percent is uh, so that, not in this measure. And another way to measure it, um, fifteen percent of deaths in the hospital are palliative care, uh, comfort care.
So, so look, I'll, I'll just, I'll just finish this up. Um, as I understand it then, it's like a symptom. I can explain what that is, Dr. Thomas later. It's a symptom of something and it may indicate, for example, that we're, that we're not uh, putting people in the hospice sort of soon enough. We're not, not sort of keeping on, or it might be a, a symptom of, of sort of a stress system. And, and we're sort of making uh, sorts of decisions that we need to make more explicit, things like that. It may be unclear exactly what it's a symptom of, but it at least tells us something that would then um, uh, prompt us to engage in, in sort of more investigation as to why. Is that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And that's all I had about that.
Okay, alright, moving on. Uh, we're next, Chief Executive Officer, Jason Adler, what do you intend for us?
Thank you. I'm gonna keep it pretty short, so definitely let me know if you have a question. But a couple of things just wanted to call out is Dr. Nyack's been here for two months now. That's going wonderfully. We've also recruited an additional A B C that was, that we just basically started with. And we have a cardiology RN physician that was, that was filled, that was open for a long time, so.
Yeah, actually filled both my RNs over there. So we've got two, one with you nurses.
We, we couldn't fill one position for a long time, so we opened a second one and that office filled both of them. No, we, they're good people, so it's, just what I don't want to say on it is kind of like echoing with Sadie was recruited here from Shane Sigler, who I helped recruit and Cat helped recruit and a lot of people. So just good people and happy staff, recruited, good staff. So it's been really fun seeing that transition and, and seeing our recruitment efforts really paying off. And it's been exciting, it was fun. Um, any questions on my narrative? You little guys. Uh, Jeffy Mott is on and I wanted him to talk about, I, I just put it out, uh, S bar, one of his staff together. But I also just wanted to give a shout out to Jeff. He was nominated for the Orby Award. I don't know what Orby stands for off the top of my head, but he was nominated by other facility chief information officers for this award. And it's um, it's not just healthcare, it's information systems across the state. So he's competing against like your Microsoft, your Googles and everybody in the admission technology. And on the eleventh, cause it's the district two, order retreat day is when he'll be recognized for that in Seattle. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Jeff, do you want to touch a little bit on the S bar?
Sure.
What does it stand for?
Yeah, so uh, so the clinic separation project, um, that was a fairly large, complex project. Um, I think it was a five month timeline, um, dozen resources on the Oracle Center side, dozen resources on our side. Um, I equate it to, um, I call these flying the plane uh, projects. And so, you know, in some cases, as you're flying the plane, you're trying to build it alongside of it. Uh, this one's a little different in that you're flying the plane, but you're taking parts and pieces off of it as it's flying, putting new pieces on um, without trying to crash it. So um, it was a fairly complex project. Um, what happened was kind of history, um, through some of the implementations. It was decided to piggyback some of the, oh, kind of the child areas. Um, so lab on the non-clinical areas, lab had a couple. So F M C laboratory and the MAC laboratory were kind of piggybacked on the main laboratory, hospital laboratory. Uh, X-ray was, was the same. And then we also had clinics, so through, through COVID, we, you know, spun up a, a bunch of new clinics, uh, specialty clinics. Uh, so whether that was, you know, dermatology, E N T, um, those P pediatrics, those were all piggybacked on to F M C, F M E, which was the parent. Um, we had that also in um, internal adult medicine. Um, when we spun up neurology and vascular cardio, all of those fell under um, internal adult medicine. So what happens is, yeah, we can create those fair, fairly quickly in the system uh, and get them up and running, which was kind of the point back then. Um, but there is some, um, I don't know, confusion or mix up between billing because now billing comes from the parent uh, clinic to the patients. And so there's confusion for patients because they would see a bill from, you know, family medicine of Ellensburg, but yet they were seen at Peds. Um, I know on the, on the rev cycle accounting side, you know, whether it's cost reporting, they were, we're all running up to the parent. And so there are a lot of manipulations in the background to uh, get that separated. So what we did was uh, basically it was time to take it all apart, make all of those clinics and those areas independent of each other, um, their own specialty clinic. And so um, you know, that was the decision, um, and it was a great project. Uh, there were a lot of people involved and it went fairly smoothly. I think we finished the project this last week was the last call. And so now it's just going straight to uh, support um, on the center Oracle side. So I think they've already seen a lot of um, changes in the system. And I know Jason can talk to that on the rev cycle side as well. Um, but yeah, it was a good project. Any questions?
So now appointment, appointment reminders should say, if you go to ortho, it'll say ortho or women's health, it's say women's health instead of saying F M E. Um, bills will say women's health or, or cardiology instead of saying internal adult medicine. So a lot more specific than that.
Yeah, yeah, the clinics were highly involved in this as well. I don't know, Stacy, how many reappointments, reschedule did the clinic P S Rs do?
Three thousand, three thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine appointments had to be rescheduled into the breakout.
Wow.
Yep.
Got a team of twenty P S Rs doing uh, almost an eight hour shift on a Saturday.
Yep.
Yeah, massive, massive undertaking and very seamless. Good job, Jeff and your team.
Thanks. Any other questions? Great.
Thank you, Jeff. Jason, just, just a couple other quick, quick rundown legislative budgets. Um, Washington State's trying to uh, close their budget deficit of fifteen billion dollars by uh, increasing taxes and making cuts. So those are the two ways to close the deficit. So they're, they're taking, taking both. Um, one of them that's on the table I talked about is the SNAP funds. So that's a, that's, it's federal funds. It's a program that's federally funded. And then the state is looking at not passing those funds on to the entities that they're intended for. So there isn't oversight after it leaves the feds' hands, unless maybe Doug gets involved, I don't know. Uh, the state's looking at reading that, uh, which is actually just in the news today. Valley Medical laid off a hundred and one staff, Valley Medical of Renton, and they tied it to the SNAP funds. They said, we don't think we're gonna get the SNAP funding uh, for twenty twenty-five, so they just laid off nearly one staff today. Employer tax, they're going to add employer tax of five percent um, for every dollar for earners over a hundred seventy-six thousand.
Sure, can you repeat it again?
Uh, five percent for, it's an employer, so employer paid, everything trickles down though.
And what was the?
A hundred and seventy-six thousand, so that's the.
So weekly here always.
So usually people, when they hit a hundred seventy-six thousand, your next one for your taxes decreased a little bit cause that's the social security cutoff, so you don't pay social security anymore, but a hundred seventy-six thousand, which it's like three point one something percent, right? It's a little bit more than that, that's.
I could six and a half per, per now.
Good, and this one five percent. Um, B N O tax, they're looking at increasing from current one and a half percent to two and a half percent. For any organization of good currents, uh, net revenue more than two hundred fifty million. So we're, we're safe from that one right now, but we've got big plans in the future.
So you've got a public hospital.
Yeah. Once we double our size, then that'll invest. Right down the road. And then a, another one's just a wealth tax. So anybody with assets over fifty million dollars, which we all determined that we were safe from that one as well, would get a tax assessed of ten dollars per um, your total net worth. So there are a few taxes and that one, though it doesn't directly impact us, it does impact um, you know, corporations and entities that choose to do business in Washington. So as we've seen, large ones like Boeing take their headquarters elsewhere, others are, are looking at the same as well.
Those are proposals or these?
Those are proposals that will probably be done in three weeks.
We expect them to.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Alright, moving on then, uh, Janine, we have uh, chief human resources, what do you have first in H R?
Well, um, on page twenty-seven, I have our workforce population, our key updates there. And I'm not gonna bore you too much with, with the numbers, except I would like to call out the very good positive trends. Um, you'll notice our total employee population is inching up in the right direction. Um, and what that means, if you um, look at that in conjunction with the uh, new postings or total active postings, um, you'll see we have fewer uh, active postings and more employees, which means we are recruiting in the right direction. So that's always good news. Um, the other thing that you'll notice too is at the total workforce, um, uh, nine hundred and sixty-two uh, headcount uh, is a significant increase. Um, and that is due in part to an increase in both volunteers and students, while at the same time reducing travel staff. Those are the numbers you want to see. So we are definitely heading in the right direction there. Um, so that is um, just some really great work um, on the part of our recruiters and also our managers. Um, the work that we did with the um, travel agency, uh, the collab um, collaboration, if you will, uh, would like to give special recognition to Pam Letts, who really did a tremendous job in putting that together um, at a time where our nursing leadership was in transition and we just had so much transition going on and she took the ball and really ran with it. Um, Jason saw the wisdom of um, getting this done as quickly as possible. Um, and the, the outcome of that has been a, a reduction in labor utilization. We were able to slough off some um, contracts that we weren't really getting any utilization out of on our per diem side. Um, we were able to reduce the total average bill spend. And the other uh, uh, really significant savings for that is we actually recruited an RN out of the E D. Um, prior to this um, collaboration, we would have had to pay about a twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollar finder's fee for that individual. Because we were part of this group, we paid no finder's fee. So we're already seeing a tremendous return on investment with this. So um, this is really uh, exciting work that we're doing. And we're actually spearheading um, the per diem utilization of this. So we're kind of the pilot project. We're watching how our per diem um, agency utilization um, is used to do that, so. That is body work. It's very exciting. Any questions on that or?
When I was looking at the packet and I apologize if you already mentioned this, under facility, it's got the bar graph here.
Oh, yeah. Um, okay, so.
I worked, worked, and looked and tried to figure out what the numbers, what the bars mean in relation to each other.
Um, so basically it's us and us. Um, the difference is it's K V H travel utilization and K V H per diem um, utilization. So if you look at the very, very top and the tiny little numbers up there in the box, you'll see W H S N travel and W H S N um, per diem. Okay. That is our network utilization uh, to, so that we can take a look at the different types of agency use. The travel um, agency is gonna be those long thirteen week, uh, twenty-six week contracts. Um, whereas the per diem is just kind of as needed, all of heart utilization. So we have them um, split out um, in such a way that it's very visible to us which is which.
Okay, so the, the K V H twenty seventy-four percent is the twenty-one.
That, yep, that's the number of uh, travelers that we have.
Okay.
And the seven are the number of per diem um, utilization as well.
Okay, thank you.
So if you look at our total agency uh, makeup, seventy-four percent are made up of long-term travelers, whereas twenty-six percent are made up of um, agency per diem.
Thank you.
And uh, just to remind everyone, we have employed per diem, um, and that we uh, are on our payroll. And then we also have travel per diem, agency per diem, which is what this is taking a look at.
I love graphs, especially graphs with colors.
Well, it just gives us a, a really good thirty thousand foot view of who we're really managing here in the organization. Cause it's just, it's, man, it's just all over the place and it changes so often. So to really get a good static snapshot of where we're spending our money. man, it's just all over the place and it changes so often. So to really get a good static snapshot of where we're spending our money, how it's being spent. Um, this, this is going to give us some really good data to be Great. Any other questions?
More questions? Right. Moving on then, we are on to Wayne Thibas, uh chief facilities officer. What do you have?
As you can see on the uh project milestones, we are doing really, met a lot of them. Do have uh February and March just on here and because everything's pretty well been rushed, we pretty well closed out everything. We're still looking at having our complete occupancy for the expansion project next week. So um, right now we've got one uh fire marshal inspection and we're good.
Is Walker still on site?
They actually uh cleared off pretty much everything uh day. Um, yeah, so they're, they're really pretty much off site. We've uh just have a few punch list items and, and just a couple of things to watch. Yes, we're good.
Anything else first on this?
Uh, I don't.
The uh or, or the, that areas seems like it's chugging along pretty good.
Definitely. I believe uh, of course, Stacy could tell you better than I can. I believe they're really enjoying their new space at GSV and uh everything's going well. The uh orthopedics is uh we're in the roughing in stage. Frank has gone up, the electricians have been they're just about finished over there. So
Call out just Mandy and Wayne and Nicole and Trent. They, they started rounding twice a day with Walker. I think in what, January?
Yeah.
That took a lot of additional time out of already busy lives to just help, helpful in this project. There were so many contractors and little every corner of the hospital. So them just rounding and finding weak spots in the barriers, um the negative pressure and just validating everything was clean, doing the best we can to keep our patients safe. So that was a lot. And I don't think you're rounding now every day. So
No.
Maybe once a day.
Go around on other.
Yeah, it was really nice. Thank you.
It was really great to get out and be with people and see haven't been in the clinical areas as much as I have with that. So it was a good um opportunity to do that again. Remind me how valuable it is to be with staff in their work environments.
I'll go ahead.
Yeah, quick question. Um, do we have like an independent party that measures like airflow and humidity in the uh surgical rooms?
We do. Um, that is all a part of our tab report. That uh we have, I just recently received it. That gives us an idea of all the balancing that they went through, the corrections that they made uh when there was an issue. And uh gives the CFMs for each of the room and everything. Now we're just at a point of monitoring it through our uh building automation systems.
Yeah, good, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, anything else for Wayne? Uh, quick question for me. Uh, you've got a, a GE x-ray tentative delivery, March seventh. Did it work out for the ride?
Uh, that is incorrect. It's a
No, I think it's May.
Yeah, it's gonna be in uh May.
We'll make it May, we'll check.
I don't know. I'm thinking maybe that might have been uh actual uh confirmation of it or I think that's probably what that was. I just didn't put it out there.
Sounds good. Excellent. Well, thank you, Wayne. Uh, moving on to operations, Dan Collins, chief nursing officer, what do you have for?
I saw page thirty-five. Um, I just wanted to call out the Philips project. Uh, we'll know about this than I do. I haven't been here very long, but I guess it's a multi-year project to uh change over our Philips monitoring system. Um, and so that we've already started the training on that and we will start going live um next week. Which is very exciting. So um, thank you for approving that and whatever.
I knew a criminal would be a very positive thing for
Yes, anything new is always stressful to the clinical staff because when you have the patient in front of you, it's hard to do change in the moment. But we use Philips before, so the trainings have been going really well. People have been engaged in them, which has been great. Um, so it's just getting used to. And then it's spring break next week, so that wasn't favorable by me. Um, so people are excited about the equipment. Um, they've been coming to the training this week, so I anticipate it'll be a pretty easy transition, once they're using that equipment. Um, uh, I was gonna to call out the project as well. I think Jason had it on his too. I just want to say, we are planning a party for the staff and everyone that was involved in the project. Um, that took a multiple, multitude of people to accomplish the OR suites, et cetera. So that'll be coming. I just wanted to tie into that. It's been um the staff, it's really interesting. When you go into the OR and you throw something at them that changes, they're just like eh. So they built a lot of resilience in this project and I do think they are ready for a break and to use their space, et cetera. Um, so the only other
They all talk like construction workers now.
She's definitely ready for Um, but the biggest thing, the exciting thing is we are working. So if you look at the most utilized area travelers, it's in the ED, um second to med surgeon, critical care. So we've done a lot of good work. We've had some great applicants coming in. Uh, one of the areas that we had trialed the residency program or a transition to practices in critical care. So we actually brought up a nurse who was from outside the hospital into critical care with very focused training and he's doing a really good job um and very excited. He feels very well supportive. And so now we're expanding that into the critical, or sorry, the ED environment. Um, we're working with E and A, which is the Emergency Nurses Association on a program for a transition to practice, which is residency, which most nurses coming out of school for many years now, but especially in current state post-COVID world are not prepared to be in the clinical setting immediately. So there's a lot of hospitals that are working on transition type programs. And so this will bridge that gap for us. It gives us tremendous amount of resources for very low dollars. Um, and so the cool thing is, is we, the traveler that we uh acquired in the ED filled one of the positions. And then we just hired a new hire from outside along with bringing back somebody who went to per diem, who's now coming in the point six. With all of that and this new program, we will fill all of our our registered nurse failures in the easy for our traveler, which will go down. Our, I would anticipate our envi, the environment there has been tough at night. They, they had one force staff. Recently, they were all travelers for, for quite a long time now. So this program, uh Cody, actually the ED director, um I don't want to take any credit for it. He has done a tremendous amount of work researching it. He's gone to WISHA, the collab. Done a lot of work on bringing this into our hospital. And the cool thing is we're the first hospital in Washington state to use it. So it's used in multiple USC, these large healthcare systems. It's usually very expensive, but because we're rural, we get quite a discount on it. Um, and so we're really excited to bring that program in and share it across. So we are purchasing access to the materials and then we can share it in other areas that we want to bring in a new grad. Cause that's, the future is really growing around that pipeline. So I was excited to talk about that. Guys, have any questions?
Any questions?
I was just gonna note one more thing with the WHSN, which is the collaborative staffing aggregator. Another, this huge indirect benefit that we didn't intend on, uh heard from managers is so much less email volume. So
Way easier.
They um for managers and admin, that was one of those things. It makes it kind of like the provider end, it's the message boxes. So um, anything to manage our inbox a little bit is huge, huge win. So no more back and forth with um individual contractors. We've had, I think, sixteen individual agency contracts and then they contract with our ends. And then they all are always negotiating. If you want to fill the shift, they want to negotiate. So it's like five emails back and forth. They negotiate the price. Um, phone calls, text messages, all that stuff. So now it all, all those contractors now have to contract with one hub, which is through the collaborative. And then we just work with the collaborative and it's all a digital um app based thing. We simply have this position open and then it goes out to hundreds of people and somebody grabs it and they can negotiate. So
And it's not just us, it's the whole collab. So everyone's following the same.
That will be moving to.
Yeah, so
We're the second ones to
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all the agencies, everyone's on that same.
Yes, they have sixty agencies now that the collaborative contracts with, whereas we contracted sixteen. Uh, six, so we're hitting a much lighter than.
Anything else, folks? All right, here are no questions. We'll move on to Rhonda Holden, chief ancillary officer.
Yes, thank you. My report is on page thirty-seven. Um, just an update on that clay on therapy. Uh, Wayne and I had a meeting today with our um architects and owners of the building and the architects that they are using. And we will be just having weekly meetings, um including Jeff Yamada and Michelle Borrell. I mean, everybody impacted so that we make sure we get everybody's input into this. Um, lots of um time with the staff, picking out equipment, determining how they, they want their workflow to be and where the equipment will go in the gym. And then think that. So that's been really good. We have a tentative review with the Department of Health on any plans on April tenth. So that's right around the corner. And then the only other update that I have is you probably noticed when you came in tonight that the Old Valley Clinic fence is down and the equipment has moved out. We've got all this open parking, which is so nice. They also took down the, the wall that they had put up in the waiting room there. So that is now torn down and we were able to move our waiting room for wound care back to the Old Valley Clinic waiting room. And the most important thing about that is it um opened up our ADA accessible handicap bathroom. So that our patients will be able to use that. They've been just using the regular bathrooms that we have in that building. Um, and we have received some patient complaints about not being having ADA. Other than that, I'm open to questions.
Question. Bobby, questions?
Nope.
Uh, I would just ask about the, the pharmacy. So it's a challenge to find some Phil's many physicians, it looks like.
Mm-hmm. He has some good candidates for pharmacists, so that'd be exciting.
Right.
Yeah. And he's stolen one of my employees from health, who actually is a pharmacy technician. He's taken her. So he's doing okay. I just won't be hiring any more pharmacy tips because Nancy steals.
Thank you. Um, Stacy, uh, uh, chief of clinic operations.
Yeah, so probably um one thing I noticed on the next third available report. Breaking up the care teams into blue, orange and green. I forgot to put data in for new patients. So FME blade team, uh next third available is fifteen days. Orange is at ten days and team green is at ten days. So I'll update that for next time. Um, otherwise I've got some nice photo of the new exam beds that were approved and purchased. They put in dermatology and rapid access. And then two photos with general surgery and best. So I can answer any questions.
The new beds are doing what we want?
Absolutely. They love them. They love the fact they sit like chairs. It will swirl for derm. And plus they're so loaded around. You don't need patients having to try to struggle and climbing on them sand beds.
Any questions for Stacy?
Nice, yeah.
Bobby, anything for Stacy?
No, that's, that looks great. The pictures, I appreciate those. Yeah.
Anything else, Stacy?
No, that's all. Thank you.
All right, moving on to medical staff. We have uh Mark Beard, my acting chief.
Uh, so we had a meeting, credentialing meeting fourteenth and have uh four people that we are placing for re, or asking for reappointment on. Um, one with the onrad and then uh with Zoe, Zoe Burt with family medicine and then Derek Henderson with uh orthopedics and uh Aaron C with internal medicine.
Very good. So uh you guys have had a chance to review the applicants or the renewals. Uh, entertain a motion to approve if anyone is ready. So the motion by Terry?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the MEC list? Say aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. So that uh motion passes. Thank you. And then it looks like we have a, a, a hospital medicine delineation of privileges that one of us could take a look at and uh prove that into the record too.
Uh, yes, we could please. Uh, we, we were reviewing the privileges uh this last meeting. We uh ran onto some new changes that had happened and we did have really good guidelines on exactly what was meant by some of the lines in the, in the text. And so had asked for the um for the hospital medicine group and the internal medicine um chief to kind of look over these and give us more clear recommendations on uh what would be required for training uh as we have new people coming on with the inpatient service uh as well in terms of what, and what, what they would be qualified to be doing. And so we asked for their clarifications. These are their clarifications and the majority are really just naming the numbers of of cases people would have managed or have taken care of or procedures they have done prior to credentialing. And then many are, their first uh couple of, of procedures here are being proctored by someone who already has privileges here to do those. Um, and those are kind of the main changes, but we again kind of wanted to clarify exactly what was meant by the, by the wording that was there before.
And so these changes have been reviewed by the core N C group and
Yes.
So you're encouraging us to move forward and uh prove these. So once again, I will entertain a motion if anyone is ready. Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Second by Erica. Any further discussion on these? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for something? Okay, then we'll move on to um chief medical officer, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you very much. My report begins on page uh forty-three and ends on the accompanying handout that uh you should have received. I will keep my presentation brief, but say that Shannon Carlson's office is doing a fantastic job. They have plenty of pending applications for more at this point to support the onboarding of the compass program for the often listed specialty services. And then on the accompanying handout, I would like to um uh pay uh uh specific uh homage to the work that uh Dr. Rob Wagenek has been doing um in his brand new role as the director for uh family birthing place. Um, he is going to be in charge of helping us to coordinate with um a number of our partner organizations. Um, not least which is OB H D who provides us with the obstetrician coverage. He's also working with Quipple Densley, the strategic funding coordinator on the Rural Moms Grant Program that we're very excited about. Uh, so I asked him to join us here today in order to recognize the hard work that he has been doing and will continue to do um in his new uh role.
Dr. Wagen, is there anything you might say about the program?
We'll be working on it and you'll, you'll hear. But I'm just very glad to be working here and being part of what is occurring. And it's not just because of the new MRI. There's just a lot of great brave and it's all because we're trying to take care of her. And we're doing things that working, I've worked at some big places, county hospitals and unit as well. And um, I feel like this is the best labor and delivery unit I've ever worked in. And just put that on the
We may have to quote you.
Yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna, gonna be going to a lot of cat funerals. No, I just saw see tremendous growth and good attitudes and uh taking care of people and. It's uh it's a really great place to work, I just need to let people know that.
Thank you, thanks for taking all this responsibility, thank you.
And Dr. Wagenek really was a glue over the last two and a half years as we tried to recruit new beginning docs and. I don't think we'd have family birthing if it wasn't for Dr. Wagenek, I don't think anybody really realizes how close we were to not having it, so. Dr. Wagenek was here a lot over the last two and a half years. A lot of the coaching that I hear and see now is just coaching on how to say no a little bit, because he almost said yes. Trying to protect some of that time and. Yeah, I just really appreciate you stepping in when you did, for how long you did, and then now it's trying to manage the new staff and how to. Welcome them into our culture and fill up the department.
And Jason said that to us uh before this meeting and uh it's just, I mean, the board has been really um. Invested in, very supportive of and desirous to keep the O B program in in town and so. And we really appreciate your sort of constant uh presence and and your sort of leadership. And uh anyway, I just wanted to let you know that uh. You know, I mean, I think I speak for the whole word to say that um this is very important to us and the crucial role that you've played in. Over this past time is is not going unnoticed, and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Appreciate that, just remember glue is just old cow.
Thank you. Dr. Thomas, anything else? Okay, thank you so much, all right, moving on to uh financial officer.
My report starts on forty four, page forty four, and I'm just gonna do. That you've had time to look it over and highlight some key takeaways. February ended very strong, um outperforming budget mainly uh with I P or I'm sorry. Inpatient volumes high and revenues high, then our contact, our contractual allowance held. Down our net profit a little bit as we keep it pretty conservative. As we work towards getting rid of some of those, you know, the counts on our accounts receivable, so we'll see what happens there as we. On the expense side, our costs are being very well managed by our managers. Coming in under budget, most notably, again, temp labor. It's a theme tonight. And and depreciation is is under budget as we wait to finish up our projects and then they'll come on, so I imagine. Uh depreciation will catch up. Let's see, uh benefits are high uh and over budget. Mainly as we're in the beginning of the year and we'll hit those thresholds and hopefully we won't have. Uh more of that tax coming on, but um both retirement and the payroll tax, you know, it'll catch up. So, let's see.
Bob, go ahead.
On the telehealth visits, which are up right quite a bit, and then we're hoping to have more. Telehealth visits with more specialties, would anything telehealth fall under that, or would you break out like? Specialty telehealth versus. Um what what we're doing up in Clayellum for telehealth, that all be the same?
Say the question again, sorry Bob.
Yeah, so with these service lines that we're gonna do more tel- hoping to do more telehealth visits. With some of the specialty care.
Yeah, so tele- telehealth is pretty um. It's not, it's not paid very well to rural health clinics, so is it, there's a large disadvantage financially to telehealth, but that doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do, so. Dr. Thomas and I and others have been talking of where we can expand it um strategically, um and one area that we. We probably see expanding in cardiology, that's been a lot of talk, Dr. Nyak and. Um the other A B C that we anticipate coming are used to a big telehealth presence. Well, that's an area, but currently the telehealth is, it's not completely limited to, but the bulk of it is behavioral health. So it fits behavioral really well, and it's also reimbursed the same for behavioral health only. Uh as for other primary care and other services, uh the reimbursement is significantly less, so. For example, internal medicine, if you have a telehealth visit, we'll get paid, it's like a hundred and seven dollars, but if you. If you look at them through the phone, but if you look at them eye to eye, it's about five hundred dollar reimbursement, so it's a significant difference.
We just looked at this over the last two years and our estimate is roughly one percent of visits over the last two years. We're done via telehealth for general medicine and for uh behavioral health, it's more like seven percent.
So and we'll still track all telehealth will be the same, would fall underlying twenty five.
Yeah, and I do, we do track it in more detail on other reports, so. So I do, I do have a detailed report of.
Okay.
Specialty primary care entirely by clinic and then and then I mean further broke out by person provider, so.
Thank you.
Um from a cash perspective, I think we already talked about the declining cash for year to date is um really due to. Uh our capital improvements and also our investment. Um but overall, our cash is really good, just under a hundred and sixty days. And I am happy to answer any question. Move on to capital.
The accounts receivable day is very good.
It is.
Because it's going down, and that a thousand percent good for us to get our finances uh. Uh paid to us, uh somewhat better than it used to be because it used to be uh close to ninety days. Day now fifty eight.
It is good until you hit a certain point where it becomes not so good, so we want to keep it right around where.
Sixteenth run our sweet spot, so Michael would then take it lower than that, because that starts meaning that you're you're writing stuff off that you could otherwise collect, so. It's really easy because how large appeals are to work to just say, uh let's write it off. Get off the A R, but but we want to set up to be um to know they have the ban for the. Parameters to to appeal claims, it takes six months to appeal a claim. Lower is not always better, I think we hit our sweet spot, we're kind of hitting now the. We got the easiest stuff, it's easy to take money out of insurance companies' pockets, now all both are sitting on self pay. We don't have a lot of teeth into our self pay payment plan policies, so we're gonna be, we work on some options there, how to. Outreach the patients um enforce an actual payment plan uh within a reasonable timeframe, so. A payment plan that pays off your debt in twenty years, which is what some of them are, isn't it? We do have them ten dollars a month on a twenty thousand dollar bill, it's probably not reasonable, so we're gonna be really trying to button those down next, so that's where. Whenever now gets the job, they're squeezing out of the people's pocket versus insurance company.
Any other questions? Um I would like to ask about uh the audit that's going up on April third. Um I'd like to attend it, I don't know if any of the other commissioners do, but I know if we're getting out of the two, we might move into a. You know, public meetings situation where we have to announce it and so forth, so I'd like to know if any of the other commissioners want to attend the April third exit interview from the audit.
I recommend it being bothered, John, science committee, because you're as both attended the insurance too, so.
Bob's gonna be there?
So you're gonna be there, Bob? Yeah, I can be there.
Oh, okay, good, I I if no one else was gonna be there, I was gonna ask for it, but I won't now, yeah, it's typically the the two.
I just wanted to confirm it in the public, so I didn't, so I'd know, so um I'll work out how to get attached to that, I think we're gonna do a Zoom call, I assume, or something, or maybe it's in person.
No, I think they're gonna Zoom.
Okay, yeah, so Bob, we'll get you that info so you can put it on your calendar.
Thank you.
And if you can't make it there, Bob, let me know and maybe I could get there. All right, thank you, Super Bob.
Okay, you also have in front of you a capital expenditure um request. Or an H R I S, Human Resources Information System. Um this has been recommended by the capital committee, also recommended by the finance committee, so approval by the board. If there's questions, Janine here to answer.
So yeah, Janine, why don't you quickly walk us through why we are gonna spend one point two million dollars?
Well, uh you're gonna, whether you like it or not, um is is part of it.
In reality, we're essentially already spending that, we're just looking at switching to something that's more optimized.
Yeah, exactly, um so the 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 system that you have now is woefully ineffective. It it was uh, the only reason you're on it is because when it's it's end of life, it's four. Four or five versions behind where it should be, and the only reason um K V H had to stay on it was because you didn't have enough time. To pivot to another system, um so now you're kind of beholden to. Either you you stay with simpler and you will move to a little over a million. Um oh well, over uh yeah, over the five year contract. Um it does not play well in the sandbox with any of our other systems, it does not have a robust time system. Uh we're not able to do the tracking or attestations that we would like to do for meal and rest breaks, just simple things like that. Um and the uh it's it's a small company that, well, this this portion of the company is small and new. It it was basically a procurement system that said, hey, let's get into the H R world. And um and hey, let's have a time and attendance system, so between simpler and premier, they can merge together to put this together. And they've got a lot of growing pains, it's very, very clear, I was talking to the service rep a couple of weeks ago, um and he didn't even try to talk me out of it, uh he said, yeah, no, I get it. Um they just have a lot of growing pains at a time where we really want to start optimizing and putting systems in place that. Uh uh you know, uh the collab discussion where they have what ninety percent less emails that they have to filter through. Just to do one placement, um this is the type of work that we want to do, we want to create efficiency so that our managers and directors can focus on. Patient care and and not the, you know, periphery back office and stuff. Um so we did take a look at simpler, Paycom, Workday and U K G. And we also reached out to the collab members and said, um hey, what are you guys using, what do you like, they actually um did a a vote. If you will, and U K G and Workday by far in a way came out on top in terms of um usability. Both appreciation from the hospitals on the backend and also uh user satisfaction from the employee end, so those were the two that we kind of focused on. Uh pretty early on, and uh in the end, we chose U K G for its functionality. Um one of the primary um asks of our folks was to get on a single platform for. Payroll, time and attendance, and most importantly, scheduling. Um and U K G was the one system that offered that, if you went with Workday, you'd have to um integrate with HealthStream. For that piece, so having one single platform for H R onboarding, payroll, time and attendance, benefits, um compensation, A C A, all the things. Was just really appealing to us, and at the end of the day, they actually came in um pretty significantly uh under. Um under what Workday would cost, the uh we were able to increase the contract um to a seven year commitment. Um and that helped to reduce cost as well, so um you know, when we were looking at the difference between Workday and U K G, we also thought. There was a higher potential with Workday to have to add additional F T Es down the road. Jeff um and I talked about it, he felt pretty confident that we would not have to add additional support staff um in I T with U K G. And so in the end, we chose U K G, the price, the usability, user friendly, um in a single platform.
Uh any questions?
We started looking at this in like February or so last year and I had shut it down, it was with Amanda and. Amanda's exit and it just wasn't super collaborative either, it was to reach all the different leaders, I just want to commend. Um Janine for reaching out to all leaders, she had multiple all department manager and invite whoever you want, fully staff. To do demos and then she offered and coordinated more demos, um and more um. And spotlighted demos into certain areas, so a lot of coordination to get all the staff on it, and so I think that's really key, because this project will. Touch every single staff member um that gets a paycheck. So it's really significant and having all the buy-in from the staff as we start this will be a huge benefit, there'll be a lot of work.
And uh to.
Get E M R for the H R side.
Yeah, to Jeff and Ginger McIntosh, uh Ginger did a yeoman's job of herding cats, I don't know, I was one of the cats. Um and yeah, so she did a tremendous job just organizing and then putting out uh. Uh Catherine House was another one that helped just kind of organize all this stuff and help us make a decision, get it into a a. You know, a reasonable and organized fashion where we could kind of contrast and compare, so yeah, a lot of people working together on it, it was great.
You anticipate the transition to.
Um I think our our goal is to have the new system by January one, and I think we're on track, if we can. Uh get moving on this within the next, you know, four to six weeks, I think we're on track to do that.
Is that where we're on that system, or is that when we would first get the system in parallel for a little while to do the transition?
No, that would be build it, implement it, do our parallel testing and like, you know, November, December and hit the ground running January one. So that finance has a very clean cutoff for payroll, that's that's the goal, and then uh our open enrollment would kind of run parallel. In the old system and the new, but Marlo, she's sometimes, she's like, you know what, I've done this manual before, I'll do it again if I have to, so. Uh everyone's chips are all in to to see this happen by January one, so.
And you'd noted we've gone from a five to a seven year contract, so I assume that increases this bottom line approximately two hundred and forty thousand a year or so. So we're really look committing like one point seven million here or so.
Yeah, potentially, it assumes up to a four percent increase in year six and seven, but there's always room to negotiate.
Yeah, it locks in an option to renew at the end of five years. And thus they can increase our rate is four percent, so it's just a early on.
But the bottom line, we're gonna pay this fee to somebody regardless, or if you're using the new fee, we're just switching.
We will have, for a period, we'll have some double costs, so we need one cost of the list. And I think it'll actually end up being cheaper, I mean, it's not, if you look at just simpler, simpler is like just a little over a million, but that doesn't include. All the other time and attendance systems, the uh scheduling systems, multiple scheduling systems that we currently have. Uh and then all of the staff time to try to manage those.
Yeah, just between um by year five, and by the end of year five, between Workday and U K G, it's about a two hundred thousand dollar difference on the low end. Um it's almost a three hundred thousand, but two hundred and seventy thousand dollar difference on the high end per year, so.
Janine, have you heard of this group or worked with this software before?
Yeah, I I was um confident either way, I'd be just pleased as punch uh if we went with U K G or Workday, I've worked with both systems and they're both wonderful. Um so uh the only thing I would say about Workday is it is highly customized, so. When you build through Workday, it is unique to you. Um so it's, anytime you're bringing someone else in, you are retraining from the ground up, it's a custom house, basically. With U K G, you've got a, you've got a a pre-built plan that you can kind of customize um to your desire, but it's still. A little bit more universal, so in terms of usability and trainability, um that's a little bit more advantageous, I think, in the long run. Um I don't think K V H really needs all the bells and whistles, um and you know, sometimes. More is not necessarily better if you're not able to use it and use it well, um so yeah, U K G, it it did. Everything wanted it to do and the price was significantly better, so that's what we went with.
Oh, I would just say on the finance side, payroll and time and attendance, U K G is, I've used it before. And I agree, and I was excited.
Yeah, same for I T, the the big thing for I T was, you know, the total integration between the systems, right, and and also. Yeah, we used U K G in Yakima for twenty five years, so yep. I mean, does it help to to monitor like overtime uh um stuff that's fairly.
Things, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like our current system, we, there's not, there's not even an F T E report in our current system, that's how. There's, there's no candidate to your reports, I have to custom make them through running sequel queries. There's, there's no candidate to your reports. I have to custom make them through running sequel queries on the servers. Um, and then,
Yeah.
Then crunch them into Excel. So that's how.
Yeah. Of, of potential overtimes, so.
And Cerner doesn't offer any of this.
It's not Cerner, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Kind of have a position control in this. Um, currently we don't have any position control documents. You know, if we approve a position and it's open for a long time to be able to track the history of that position, we'll have, we currently have an Excel spreadsheet that's really easy to get behind on.
Mm-hmm.
Labor analytics, run it through Power B I. I'm just getting all excited.
And what, what do we pay now for the so, the different software that we're using?
Well, technically, right now we're paying about, uh, a hundred thousand. Um, however, that is, that is not what we're moving to. We can't stay on that because our, our current system is
Obsolete.
Obsolete. They're not gonna, they're not gonna work with it. So it's gonna jump to, in year one, it's gonna jump to three hundred thousand, no, two hundred ninety-two thousand. Um, and that includes, um, uh, ninety-eight thousand dollar, uh, implementation. Oh, I, I apologize. We're currently paying about a hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, we will jump to three hundred thousand with a ninety-eight thousand dollar implementation. Um, so that, over the course of five years, it'll be about a million six.
This implementation here at fifty-five thousand, is that for one of the other?
That's the implementation startup. That would be for U K G. That's if we choose U K G, yep.
So, um, sh- should I be nervous at all that on this document, asking for one point two million, you never mentioned the word U K G?
Where, which one? Oh.
That would be.
It's like a blank check.
I have mine. It says U K G.
Yeah, make a motion and. It would be for the U K G system, right?
I think we should insert those letters, that acronym in.
Same.
This motion.
Yeah, U K G and, um, so, uh, yeah, it's not on here, but it is on.
But that's the intent, isn't it?
Yeah, so that capital expenditure request on the U K G on it, but.
Is that something that can be edited and post-processed and so reflects?
Just motion. I think just in the motion.
Be in the minutes, Erica.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion?
You do. I moved to approve the capital item request for the U K G Human Resource Information System.
Thank you for that.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Matt, uh, moved by Erica. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 I too will vote aye. That motion passes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Um, anything else, please?
Uh, that is all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Are you good? Moving on, uh, we have the maybe relations report, chief of relations office, Michelle World, who's not available tonight.
Yes, and Michelle had a family emergency, had to step out. So, um, her report's there, page fifty-six. I would like to introduce, um, Crystal Sutton in the back. And she just recently accepted a new position for Strategic Funding Coordinator, that backfells Mitchell Rhodes position, which was a grant, grant writer position. And she is part of, um, Michelle's team currently and still is. So this position is still under Michelle's area. So excited to have, have her help in this new role.
You said that was Strategic Funding Coordinator?
Yeah. Trying to expand in more of this grades.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Welcome. Thanks for sitting through the meeting so far. Good. Anything else, uh, on her report?
Um, I know Michelle's working with her team just to go around the staff and get new pictures of our facilities, our equipment and our people. So something I've asked for is to, um, when you have a commercial or you have us on our website, I want our people, not a A I person. So trying to, again, just kind of lock in and show, um, our staff more to the community. And I think it will help with buy-in as people see each other's faces. You're at the movie theater and like, oh, that's, that's my neighbor or whatever. So.
All right. So it is, uh, seven thirty-five. We finished our reports. We're gonna be moving into some education in old business and new business. Um, why don't we go ahead and take a, a five minute break? Um, all of you finished your reports. You're completely welcome to exit for the evening. You're also welcome to stay if, for some reason you want to listen to the remaining debates that are gonna go on. So either way, but let's, uh, take five minutes and then be back at, well, my watch, the seven forty's, we're gonna come back.
Is this going into executive session or just taking a break for?
I've just taken a break, continued regular session.
Okay, thank you.
They had to talk about.
I think very much.
No, there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no last year's motion. Not that one, no. Yeah, so when I'll be, cause I told Laura.
When I say something like.
She's doing it now.
She has.
So.
She's better at this. To distill that. Which she's done. I know. Yeah. But everything hinged on that. There was no data in range. Yeah. So. That I've been attending some, yeah, things in, um,
Right.
I think that's sweet without measuring improvement.
Yeah.
We're not great at measuring.
That's good, yeah.
And I have this tool that I've encouraged people use, but it's. It shouldn't have gone to the bathroom. Yeah. And so they are running, they are running. Of sport food to like. Yeah, some people just don't love it. It's like. You want to start just from the right. Want to start looking for money funding sources outside of the hospital. We have to have that base. Yeah. So. And there, a lot of it's there or it's, you do, you.
We'll say.
Pain a few times, but you know, it, and it's not manual, but you do it and then you have it. So, no, thank you. And I, um.
Thank you.
You missed. Don't. Don't raise three. I had it open when I left my office. Please. Well, it looks amazing. So I think it's. But don't you think it's like super compelling? Oh, yes. Well, that's why I was like, oh, wait a minute. There is a story there. And which will be better in the future. Yes, it will. Now I know. Yeah, but also, um, just, you know, degrees and math and history. And so to her, and she's pulling reports. It's just what she has available. Yeah, when you.
So Shannon gets, help you set up.
That's what I said, like, when you guys read this, please look at the second half. It's like just made us. I'm so excited.
I'm sorry. I thought we were doing a lot of change. We're just letting people exit.
Awesome stuff.
See you. One minute, let's do it soon.
But I understand.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Seven forty, so let's, uh, bring this back. It was touching to continue.
Thanks for all your patience.
Session.
Appreciate it. See ya.
All right. So, uh, next up, we have a presentation of board reports. Um, I wanted to add in there, talking about Shalane. So for the commissioners and for Jason, just to get the, uh, final determination, uh, Shalane's happening June twenty-second through the twenty-fifth. I want to give sense if any of the commissioners felt this would be a useful, uh, way to spend their time during those days. So just.
Hard for me to know without.
And it's still, I, I checked a few days ago. They're still not on there.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've always gotten some of the value out of it.
Yeah, I have too.
But, you know, I'm gonna go with the will of the, of the board as a whole. I mean, yeah, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen there, but.
And, and Bob, are you back on? I can't see your face. I just wanna see if you're still with us.
I'm still with you.
Okay.
And one of the things you get there that you don't get at, uh, you know, at A H A meetings is the specific sort of challenges facing Washington hospitals and, and how they're sort of handling some of that stuff. Like I said, I'll defer to the board as a whole. I think it would be good for, for either, you know, most for all of us to go or none of us. So whichever way the board wants to go, but I, I find value in.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I'd like to go, but I, uh, cause Matt and I have been there and it was very educational. Bob, do you have a feeling, uh, an opinion about this?
Um, are you, are we looking at more the end of July or first part of July?
This is, uh, June twenty-second through June twenty-fifth. It's a Sunday through Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it, I, I think it'd be good to get together.
And, uh, and I believe we, we have rooms reserved. So if, if, as long as we make a decision soon, we, we'll have.
Yeah, but I'd just like to, um, either keep six rooms and let the rest go. Or if we know that two people aren't gonna go to, to let those rooms go, cause we do need to let the rooms go here in the next month.
If.
Oh, go ahead.
If there's, I think that if fellow board members think that there's value and are, are, um, optimistic about that, I would, I would go. And I just wanna be mindful of expenses, but I, if you're feeling optimistic, then I will too.
Yeah, I think, uh, I, I haven't gone for a couple of years now, so I think, um, I probably would like to attend. Subject to, ideally, when the agenda comes out, there are some things to get excited about and say that's good. But also, you know, like Matt pointed out, there are things very relevant to our particular state at this sort of function. Um, if you're able to join us for one or more of those days, depending on your schedule, it's good for you to get a little C O, C E O FaceTime and stuff there too. So people can see that transition. So I would support it if, again, what I'm hearing is most everyone seems like it's, it's worth, worth it this year and we'll kind of go from there. So.
Yeah, I, I can't a hundred percent commit yet, but I'm planning to at minimum go, I guess, from previous agendas. There's usually a C E O day at the, I think the last session on the last day, so I was planning.
Over here, but last year, her separated.
Okay. But I, I am on wish calls all the time and I'm, I'm with the wish committees and I, I probably already exposed to everything it'll go through. So if I miss it.
I think you can make the decision when it's appropriate for you. I, I, I don't think you need to decide tonight, but unless it's a solid no or something.
No, no, so no. Uh, it's the, it's the board week or Thursday's board meeting. And then we're planned, tended to plan to go out of town that Friday. So it'd be, it'll be a lot to cram in.
And again, I, not. Like we talked about, I have no issue with that Thursday board meeting, you not being here in person. I mean, it's a lot for you to juggle, thinking Shalane and the, a hundred other stuff. So what is best for you? Um, so what I'm hearing is there's no objection and I don't think we need to vote on it. I just wanted to get a consensus so that Mandy knows what to do.
We'll keep, we'll keep six, six rooms.
Okay, and hopefully they'll post an agenda and we can have a discussion. And I don't know, as we get closer to it, if we wanna plan for our group to have some, like, you know, some sideline stuff. Since we're all there to care if there's anything we want to discuss or just see, see as it comes and stuff. So. Okay, all right. So that sounds good. Planning to go to that. Uh, now we're onto, uh, section eight, old business, board self-evaluation. And, uh, does anybody wanna talk on that? Or you want me to talk on that? Do you have any?
Um, so we, at the last board meeting, the board asked us to, uh, just talk amongst executive session and get some feedback. So we did that and then, um, Michelle World took a lot of notes. And we also said if anybody wanted to email her and say anything anonymous, um, she could, she could attach those. And so if people wanna send messages directly to the board, they can too. So I don't know if you guys receive anything directly. Uh, Michelle summarized that and sent it to the board chair. So John has that now. So it'd be just next steps, which, um, is up to you guys. The recommendation could be to, we can schedule a special board meeting if you would like, um, to go over that. So it's, it's up to you guys. I think that's what we did last year or what was, or what we've recommended the last board meeting, just to have open conversation.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I would lean towards, but I will go with the majority of the group, the thought being, we have some feedback now from senior leadership. We'll have our own individual thoughts, like we did before, uh, meet in a, at a, in a private space, go into an executive session and, um, do our self-evaluation and go through the notes that we got from senior leadership and talk amongst ourselves. And out of that, again, the goal is to improve our, you know, our skills and what we do as board members, uh, based on the feedback we get. Uh, Bob, what, what is your thoughts on having a special meeting in the near future to address this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Is this, it can go on an executive because it's personnel?
Yes, we did last, last time we did it, we just, yeah, so.
I hope, hope that whatever time we allow ourselves, we give our time, we give ourselves time to consider opportunities for improvement. And maybe cobbled together some sort of rudimentary plan for achieving the improvements that we would like to see. Um, maybe we can each come up with an individual and then as together as a, or something for the board to improve on.
Terry, are you, are you interested in a get-together with ever, the five of us?
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So, uh, and I'm supportive of that. So it feels like when Mandy's back from her leave, um, she can start to work a calendar to reach out to people and propose some dates and, and, uh, see when people are gonna be in town that we can, uh, need to. It'd be nice to do it before the next board meeting, but.
I'll just throw out that I have zero daytime availability during the week until the end of the Williamsburg school year. Um, I, we'll have freedom after, say, two forty-five P M.
Okay, so late afternoon, early evening, sort of thing. So, yeah, yeah. And, and Bob, are you back in town, uh, you know, most of the rest of April or?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right. So Mandy will just begin the process of trying to figure out when we can all be, although from that.
For some dates after three P M.
Get out there. Good. Any other?
Go ahead. Uh, just having not been present for those before, I can, we'll schedule a time that I can be present. I can pop in and out too, if you guys would like. So it, it does know that.
It might be useful to go through Michelle also for part of me. I'd like the privacy of the five of us alone at some point. But I think she has ingested a lot of this information and give us that first pass on what she heard along with you. And then I think if we were left alone after, are people comfortable with that as an idea or?
Recent, or recess. So till five.
No, we don't recess. We just say, thank you. You gotta go. We're gonna talk honestly now and we can't have a record of this. So.
That's fine.
Okay, Bob, any other thoughts?
No.
Okay, thank you. So you have enough, uh, info to know.
Yep.
Begin a plan of attacks. All right. So if there's nothing else on the self-evaluation, um, I wanted to put on there, uh, the, the board meeting agenda. Last month, I proposed a variety of ideas. It feels like one of them grabbed on a little bit, uh, being the spotlight tonight, which I think is good, although I think we have to be careful in the future. If there's another big presentation, maybe not do a back-to-back big presentation. I wanna make sure that people that come and spend their time feel like they've got our full attention. We're not already tired and stuff. So. Um, but you guys like the idea of a spotlight is, um, we go through, get to see different parts and stuff for it.
Nice.
Yeah. I've not heard any other feedback on the other things I suggested. I don't know if any of you.
Remind me when we're at.
Well, I had suggested, you know, maybe reorganizing the agenda on who goes when. Uh, you guys countered with some reasons why we do quality. Cause I don't take any issue with that. Again, I'm just presenting. I, I wanna make sure we're not doing any, cause that's just the way we always did it.
And there was the frequency of reports and what, picking of that.
What we've heard and, uh, the people in the room can say if I'm wrong, is that, is that they appreciate the monthly reports.
Okay.
Okay. Even though sometimes they're semi-stytenin.
Yeah.
Sometimes you may be updated to various sections.
Yeah, I appreciate the regular.
Um, and then one of my other goals was to efficiently move through the core business that we have and leave time for discussion on bigger ideas that, as the board falls within their responsibility. It may not be immediately in front of us, but these are things coming down the line, months, years ahead. And from the meetings I've attended on trying to educate board members on how to be. Board members on how to be better board members, it feels like to me, it's one of those things we come up a little short on sometimes. We're a little more reactionary than we are. We've talked about this, even though it's a ways in the future, we feel um. We're educating ourselves, we're having discussions, we're strategizing into the future and stuff and 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 so go ahead.
Is that a potential bullet point that would say on the horizon or something like that?
It's a again, just that my only thing is looking at our agenda. I I didn't feel like we were having a lot of those discussions. Again, we're very. What's right in front of us, we need to answer. And I wasn't sure if any of you um would enjoy the opportunity to take bigger broad stroke. Things and just put them in play and just talk and does it lead somewhere? You know, one probably bad example is. Um, the expansion project we're just finishing. I remember, I remember walking the parking lot with with Julie and originally, we're thinking about expansion like twenty twenty-seven. You know, she said, boy, I'm I'm feeling we're, we're already bumping up against some things and and you start to have this discussion. And suddenly we, you know, get the whole board together. We're like, we think we may have to move expansion up several years. And a couple of years later, we have a really nicely improved facility and all the feedback I'm getting is those improvements are very helpful. The recruitment to just people having space to move and live. And again, I'm just saying that came out of kind of a. From my perspective, maybe you guys had your own discussion, but kind of just kicking the tires with the CEO and saying, what what are we, what are we frustrated about? What's the next thing we can tackle? And there's all these sorts of, I know in the in the sheet I gave you last week, I had, you know, half a dozen ideas of topics. We could tackle over the months. So what I'm gonna say is this, I presented some thoughts I had. I'm not gonna move forward with anything. Well, I can't, but if you guys embrace any of it and want to talk about it and say, we need to officially do this, we can do that. Otherwise, it's just gonna kind of die a slow death. I won't bring it up again for an extended period. It feels like the thing that might live is the CEO. Not the CEO, but the spotlight on departments and so forth. So I will be quiet for a while and see if you guys have anything to say.
Was there a handout you said? After I left.
I gave, but I maybe I didn't, because I know you left. I thought I gave yours, because I knew you were leaving, but I could be wrong. But if anybody has one, it's gonna be Matt.
I could just take a picture of it if you don't mind. Like you on this.
Just my my comment of the taking it in is, I feel like what you're describing is our executive session as well. So I just want to share with board too, our executive committee is exactly that. We meet once a week. We reflect on things that have happened. And really future looking and very collaborative too. And through that, we talk through things that do come to the board. So like last month, um looking towards the next big project to be Radio Hill reasons why. So we go through all that really collaboratively on the operations side and then come to the board. Time to discuss. And then just like collaboration, hopefully no.
If if you can pay attention when the CEO was talking, I appreciate it.
I think uh, so, I mean, this isn't formal, but um would it be enough just to sort of say like. We want to keep an eye on this stuff. So when this comes up with you or during these executive, you know, um. These meetings of the uh ELT, is that ELT?
Senior leadership.
I'm sorry, I get it confused with central. Cabal of uh cigar smoking brandies. Uh, anyway, um, so uh would it be enough just to sort of say, look, we want to keep an eye on this? When stuff comes up? Bring it to us and we can talk about it during your report. I mean, I don't know, it's not formal.
Yeah, and I've been trying to send you guys uh just an email. I mean, you know, a month is kind of a long time, but it's also not. So I've been trying to just shoot a message and if that sparks things you want to talk about, um at our one-on-ones or email back that we want to have a special. Time or subcommittee or whatever. We used to have like finance committee or finance sustainability committee that met a little more regularly. And we could get back into that habit as well.
Formality of that where we could just really probe different questions, open up spreadsheets. Just see where it led to help us understand. So I I do kind of miss that. There's been a lot of transition, but maybe we can get back.
Yeah, that that just fell off due to. Everything's ongoing and we were teeing up new capital or anything like that.
My, I guess, what what I would, I like the idea. I mean, John, you had some sort of specific suggestions, which I appreciate. What what I don't want it to devolve into is just sort of worry and and just, you know, I will, I like that's some direction. If it's just like, hey, let's talk about the future, then it's just too over, too nebulous. Um, so I don't know, I kind of. If we were gonna do something like that, I want some sort of specific, you know, topic or some specific. But if you think that you guys are sort of talking about future uh challenges, you know. Ways to anticipate future challenges, things like that, if it's enough for you to just sort of bring that during your reports or something, I mean, that would be. Are there anybody else have thoughts on this?
No, but it did remind me that um. Uh, we should. Uh, resurrect the coffee with commissioner.
Why? You want to spend some more time alone with me, Bob?
I do. I missed you, Matt.
Could be especially useful.
It is, it is true with the levy talk, you know.
Yep, so a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point, Bob. If, you know, depending on what we decide with levy, uh that would really be really good, I think.
It might be an opportunity to do like an event at How Homes or something too that we advertise, a Q and A and just, you know. The this is what we're doing. You know, and we we've talked, we've had a lot of new services and just explain to people what we're doing. Cause I know we mostly hear people who are frustrated. I couldn't get my doctor's appointment or whatever, but there's so much more going on than just that, so.
Explain that we want to add even more services faster.
Yeah, anything that we can organically do that we can stabilize. I I again, like cardiology makes me nervous, you know. You you build it with one person and it's so scary because you you get a lot of customers and then if something happens that one person has to step aside, it's very fragile. But I I appreciate how much we're trying to stabilize those things too. So that's exciting. But we're diverging a little bit. Um, so so the 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 essence of this is over the next month or two, if as commissioners, you want to ponder how we approach the agenda. Um, again, I've put some ideas out there. Um, if anybody wants to offer other ideas, otherwise again, we're just gonna keep doing what we do. But at least I'll sleep good at night knowing I I pushed to make sure we were thinking about it. And if it's status quo, that is fine also. We, those are pretty functional meetings, but I feel you can always look to improve a little bit. So that's the whole goal of this.
I think the spotlight is a good improvement. I think otherwise, I'm fairly happy with the way they go.
And the order of how things unfold during the meetings, people are satisfied with who goes when and.
Don't have a problem with the order.
Alright, so any other uh discussion on board meeting agenda stuff for all business?
I do like the break, allowing people to leave if they want to, so they don't have to sit here through a conversation.
Like this, I feel much more rushed, although I feel bad if Dr. Thomas is having to sit through it. I would feel more rushed if the room was still full of people. I would feel like I could pester mad a little bit with my idea, but my repetitive ideas, so.
Don't feel bad. He's welcome to go. He doesn't go when I tell him to.
No, but I appreciate, but you're here. I appreciate your willingness to continue to see how this functions, so you can offer ideas to us in the future also. Um, Bob, anything else you want on this uh agenda topic?
Uh, no, I think it's good. Thank you.
Alright, so we are moving on to new business, uh CEO ninety-day evaluation. Um, does anybody else want to speak on that? Or?
What do you have to say?
So um, Jason, as you as you know, had indicated to us, he felt he should go through the same evaluation we do for all the other employees. We're slipping from ninety into one twenty or one fifty, but the spirit is there. Um, people have been traveling, Jason was gone. So um, we just want to uh same sort of thing, have S L T have a chance to offer. Feedback that's hopefully useful. And then uh we would meet with Jason. Uh, so Bob and I would probably handle the actual meeting with Jason to talk about what we learned. But just, you know, how we want to handle or, you know, the commissioners want to have comments on on things that we want to report back to Jason. Um, for his first phase as CEO and so forth. So just formalizing this, and if anybody has any other thoughts on how they want to do this. We're just gonna reach out to S L T, which may be happening in the background already and.
Would that be Janine's solicitor?
I've I've talked to Janine about wanting to do it. Um, there's some proposals as how to approach it. Um, again, I wanted to, I felt, I always feel the nuances can come out of a conversation more than somebody just writing a text or an email. This is how I feel. Cause sometimes we need to dig a little deeper and it's much more efficient. So I I thought uh if if Bob is available, we'd make ourselves available to the S L T. To just have group or one-on-ones, whatever's necessary to get information out there. Our whole goal again is just to make Jason as strong as CEO as possible and provide him with honest feedback. Um, because we all, obviously all can always approve, improve. So just give him an opportunity to hear that. So.
Love the, love the feedback. So that's what, yeah, that's where to get early feedback and then to do anything, the board has to make a motion to it. So we had kind of talked about it before and then Mandy thought it's like, well, you guys, the board can't do anything unless the board makes uh takes action. So it'd just be a a motion to say we we would like to move forward and do a ninety-day evaluation. So the fifty-day evaluation.
Uh, the only thing I suggest is, I mean, conversations are good, but uh it's good to have a paper trail too. Like if if there are specific. Expectations for what he's gonna do moving forward, we should write it down, you know, uh instead of just, you know, because uh one of the things with the conversation is people can hear different things. Uh, whereas if you get it in black and white, it could be, it could be good. So that's the only suggestion I'd have. It's good to have a conversation. If there are specific things we want him to do, I would suggest it gets written down somewhere.
Are you suggesting that the, maybe the S L T conversations are just conversational, but then that is summarized in some sort of a document? When John and Bob meet with Jason?
Well, it could be even after they meet with him. I mean, it's fine with me, but I would just like to get some, you know, this is what the board thinks. Uh, you've been doing, this is what we think you could do better. This is what we think, uh, you know, and then something that you agree, yes, that's what I heard. I would like to get something in black and white.
And yeah, and I I agree with the final, the final summary should should be clearly, yeah. And if there are. Goals or things we want to change or see different, that would also be in writing. So it's, it's not like, I thought you meant this or whatever. No, I agree. No, no doubt about it.
So I'll move then to. Conduct a somewhere between ninety and one hundred and seventy-five day evaluation of our CEO.
A second.
Second by Matt. Uh, any further discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. I too will vote aye. That motion passes. So I'll work with Mandy and Janine to. Do some prep work to make sure we're moving forward with this in the near future then, so.
Yeah, so we were, we're in an open session right now.
We're in an open session right now, correct? Alright, um, moving on. So next up, we have executive session. Um, what, how much time do we need for executive session today, would you say?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, quick. So it is eight oh three. We will take a seven-minute uh break and at eight ten, we will reconvene into executive session. Um, and we need about ten minutes and when we're done with that, we will reconvene into public. And will there be any decisions or votes or discussion in public session after that?
No, I think the vote, no.
So no action after, expected after executive session. Okay, so we are adjourned for seven minutes and then uh Bob, come back into executive session at eight.
Bob, do you have the link?
I do, yes ma'am.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.